If you wish to follow along with the meeting, you can go to eat code three sixty under the city of Trenton's portion. Go to the regular meeting agendas and look. Date and you will get the agenda docket and all the meeting items for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Collins. Chuggling through your bag.
Let me mute myself there. Counsel President. I have a computer issue. Just hold on. No, I got it. Straightened itself out.
All right. So this meeting is being called to order.
Meeting is being recorded. On counsel, if you can mute yourselves, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the open public meetings act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. This agenda is completed to the extent known and was sent to the Trent times and the Trentonian newspapers posted on the. The hall filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely.
Present.
If you are not on council, please mute yourselves. Okay, Ms. Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison, have you joined us yet? I know he will be here shortly. Mr. Michelle.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Vaughn. And Council President.
Present.
As President, we do have a quorum with two members absent and now called the directors, Mr. Cruz.
Present and good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cherry.
Hold on just.
I'm sorry, there seems to be someone talking over.
Yeah, I heard you. I had to mute somebody. Mr. Manali. Mr. Bridges is here and is there anybody else from the law department here?
Sally Samuel on behalf of the law department.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Colin.
I have. Director Colley.
Present.
Director, Director, I'm sorry, Chief Mazer. Present. Director Delisle.
Present.
Acting Director Lopez.
Mr. Colin.
Yes, ma'am, I did. Thank you, sir.
What is going on here?
I'm getting a lot of ladies and gentlemen, please, if you are not on the city council or not being called for all, please mute yourselves and keep yourselves muted throughout the meeting. Thank you very much. Director Richardson.
Present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am. Director Lavenberg.
Present.
And Acting Director Dzalinski. Okay, just to let counsel know, a letter was sent out earlier today on naming Ronald Zalinski as the Acting Director of Finance. That's why I called Director's name. Madam, we have a quorum. Would you like me to proceed to the invocation and the flag salute?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. If we could all bow our heads. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of the community and community and thy greater glory. We also ask that you remember Officer Brian Sicknick, who lost his life at life at the Capitol Building, and FBI Special Agents Darren Daniel Alphen and Laura Schwarzenberger, who gave their lives two days ago in the line of duty. We ask this and we pray amen.
Amen.
If we could all rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States.
State of America.
And to the Republic.
Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty.
To the people and justice.
For all. Thank you. President McBride.
Yes, all right.
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution on the docket.
They make a recommendation for.
I'd like to make a motion. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table resolution twenty one zero four six.
I would hope that we would wait till we get to that resolution or we so start out by taking part in the. Consider agenda and if this not a part of the consent agenda and we can address.
I'm just stating that I would like to get it a pull call based on the letter that we received from the attorney. I think it would be a good idea for us to, you know, table it at this time.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
We're coming in hot. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we must entertain a motion. He actually has a motion to table, but we do have a public hearing scheduled, so we I didn't know if you also wanted to adjourn that public hearing until a later date, if that's the if that's inclusive of the motion or if we're still proceeding with that motion.
Mr. Conlin.
Yes, ma'am.
There is no motion because I did not allow that to take place until we get to that resolution. We will discuss that when we get to that resolution. Now, we can continue the business as it is. Moving forward.
Not a problem.
Minutes with the consent agenda and when we get to that resolution, then we'll deal with that at that time. But for now, we won't have any interruptions and we'll continue with the business of the city.
Yes, ma'am. First on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the June eighteenth regular meeting. Did any counsel have any comments or any edits to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June eighteenth? So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Ms. Caldwell Wilson. All in favor of approving the minutes of June eighteenth, twenty twenty one? Oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. Minutes are approved. We now move to communications and petitions. There are twenty five communications on the docket from received by the clerk's office. There are no reports. The reports for the financial be received at the next meeting, the second meeting of the month. Do I have a motion to approve the communications and petitions of the clerk's office?
So moved.
I have a motion by President Cole Wilson. I have a second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Motion is to approve the minutes is carried. Next on the docket, we have a public hearing opportunity to be heard. Proposal removal of TPA commissioners.
Now, Mr. Blakely, Councilman Blakely.
Yes, ma'am.
Now is the opportune time to make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to table this to get the guidance of our law department on a recent correspondence from the attorneys from for this matter. And so I'd like to make a motion to, you know, make sure that we're operating in the legal clear area or a legally clear area.
Now, Council President, I do have a motion on the floor to table the actual resolution, but that would still not cover the hearing for tonight. We would actually have a mode have to have a motion to adjourn the hearing. So are we proceeding with the hearing as well or is there a motion to adjourn the hearing to a later date as well?
I would, I would have a motion to do that as well, but I think does it have to be two separate motions?
No, it can actually be a combined motion to table to to adjourn the hearing and table the resolution because they sort of go together. So it would be proper to do that if that's what we're doing. If you're going to adjourn the hearing, you really shouldn't consider the resolution. So you can tag that on.
Council President.
Wait, yes, you will. Yes, you will.
I do have a motion.
The first thing we're going to do, Mr. Colin, is get a second on the motion and then we'll look up the floor to the council.
Do I have a second on Mr. Blakely's motion to adjourn the hearing to a later date and to table the resolution?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell Wilson. Do ma'am, do you want to open the floor up for debate on this or would you like to call the road?
Yes, I would like to open up the floor for Councilwoman Vaughn to come in and say.
Yes, I think this is a a legal, I think by the attorney representing the the individuals who are being called. For hearing, being called for removal this evening and to be heard to give them due process. Is is a grand is grandstanding and attempting to disrupt the hearing and kick it down the road for whatever the reason. I will tell you before we went forward with this, they had ample time to respond, but we get a letter from this law firm and the and not even in the eleventh hour, five minutes or so before the meeting that they want to that they had these concerns. Now, when I put forward, before I put forward the resolution, I engaged the city of Trenton's law department to inquire what the what the what the jurisdiction the city council has over the commissioners and the Trenton Parking Authority Board. And Mr. Bridges sent that opinion to every council member, including Councilman Blakely. And not once have we heard from Councilman Blakely until this evening on his grab on on postponing this hearing, not once. So if he was concerned about any issues regarding the council's powers over removing the commissioner, any commissioner that we seated over at the Trenton Parking Authority, or I should say correction, that we appointed and provided advice and consent to over at the Trenton Park Parking Authority. Then he should have done so sooner. To do so now is just political posturing. And a council should not stand for that and we should move forward with the hearing because we got ample time and I would like the law department who represents this council in this city. And all the entities to to reiterate the opinion that he put forward. And in stating exactly what our purview is over the two individuals in question that the council seated. And this is what this hearing is about. And I don't understand again why this law firm has come in at this hour when they had ample time to do otherwise. Thank you, Council.
Yes.
Counsel.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Um, yeah, I will certainly not. I will vote no to. I will vote to table this. And it's not based on the threatening letter that we received in the parking authority attorneys. It's based on my opinion that this is in right now in the hands of the ethics board. And I would like to see the results of their investigation before we have any further discussions on removing commissioners. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Harrison.
That's the same thing I was going to say. Also, this was not on the docket for Tuesday. This is now being walked on. But I agree the same thing with the Council and Caldwell Wilson that I would like to see the results of that before we start making any kind of move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there if there's no other council person that would like to speak to this matter.
President McBride. I'd like to, I'd have something I'd like to say. I have a question I'd like to ask.
Go right ahead.
Yes. Mr. The Law Director, can you give us a opinion on the legality of this hearing?
I don't think I understand your question. An opinion on the galley of what hearing?
Of 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 the hearing of the resolution in question. Do we have the authority to have this hearing? Regarding this matter without an investigation?
At the risk of, I appreciate your question, Councilman Blakely. Thank you for that. At the risk of being overly cautious, I provided this in a written privilege memorandum to counsel, which basically spelled out chapter and verse. The council's authority to remove and the process to remove to the extent you'd like me to reforward that or speak to you offline. I'm more than happy to do that. I'm not trying to be obstreperous, but I just would rather us discuss that attorney work client attorney privilege document with you separately. But I will forward that to you and I believe that that will answer your question very, very thoroughly.
Well, let me ask another question. Did you sign off on this resolution?
No.
So just to be clear, the law department did not sign off on this. Have you reviewed this resolution?
Yes.
Why didn't you sign it?
For the reasons provided in that memo.
So if it was legal, you would have signed it. And so the fact that you didn't sign it means that you didn't believe it was legal. That's just a logical step. And so based on the advice of council of our legal council, I just think it's a good idea for us to make sure that we are being responsible. And that we follow the law. I don't have an opinion one way or another. I think that an investigation should be done to determine if any laws were broken as it relates to this. But until that investigation is concluded, I think it's improper and not wise for this council to vote on a resolution. That has it that has questions surrounding its legality. And that's all I have to say about that. And people can vote their conscience. Thank you.
Council President McBride.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Okay, um, we're in a council meeting. We're in a public meeting. We have followed the procedure of notification within ten days as if as per procedure. If there is a statute, Mr. Bridges, that precludes that makes this hearing illegal, as is being described. Then then you, as a representative of the respective entities of the city and this council, you need to tell us that now. And it's and it's not attorney client privilege because we represent the public. This is a public hearing. And every single appointed official and elected official here tonight on this particular resolution needs to hear from you. And you need to guide us through this so that.
Part of the problem is you have to read.
Please, I'm not. Well, I did. And that's why I think when Councilman Blakely just said to you that our you did not sign it because you believe that it was, I don't know whether you believed it was illegal because I got the email right here and you you said that the council does have authority to remove the individuals that we appointed.
Are you?
We did not have the authority to remove the two that the mayor appointed.
Are you waiving the attorney client privilege that you have?
There's no attorney client privilege here, Mr.
So as I said in the memo, as as I said in the memo to counsel that was attorney client work product, you are now asking me to disclose. You the council does have the authority to remove members that it appoints with ten days notice and an opportunity for those commissioners to be heard, as was further spelled out in that memorandum of law. The reason for that is because you're protecting people's constitutional due process to be heard, opportunity to know the charges and to be heard. However, as further discussed in that memo, as articulated by Council President, as articulated by Council Vice President, and as articulated by Councilman Blakely, I can't make a determination whether or not anything was wrong because the law firm that was charged with doing the investigation said specifically in their memorandum to the Ethics Committee. Which somehow was disseminated again, which is also attorney client work product privilege, that they have not completed their investigation. So based on my memo to you that was also sent to counsel, my recommendation, legal recommendation was for you to let the investigation finish so that you can make an informed decision. That was in my memo. It was very clear to procedures and it was very clear my recommendation why, as your fellow council members said, you should wait to allow the investigation to complete. It was not a gray area. It was two paragraphs long. It should not have been that hard for you to digest.
Uh, Council President, may I continue?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I will again reiterate the powers of this council. For the Faulkner Act. The powers of this council is that we have investigatory powers. We can investigate any entity, individual, apartment head. Uh, 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 city. And per the parking authority law, we have purview to remove. Five, five of the officers. That we appointed, period. And nowhere in the law states that we have to any of our removal, we can we can just remove for cause, for cause. And I would like in a minute for Mr. Bridges to tell us the definition of cause. So that means that we do not ever, ever have to wait for any ethics board opinion. We have within this council an obligation. To review any individual that we appoint that we believe they are not acting in the best interest of the residents and taxpayers and the electorate that put us in these seats. So for any one of us, you can do as you please and you can not vote for it, voted up or voted down. But I want to be clear that there is nothing illegal about this resolution based on the Faulkner Act and based on the parking authority law. We are here in this hearing today to hear from two individuals that were involved in a particular incident over at the parking authority, the two individuals that this council. Appointed and they have to answer to us. And there's nothing illegal about that. And there's nothing in the law that says ever at this, we have purview of the ethics board. We, the council, created by ordinance, the ethics board. We do not have to wait for them to come to us to tell us how to represent this city. And anybody who's who is even putting that out there, it has has another agenda other than representing the city and making sure that everybody is operating who has been appointed and elected in the best interest of the city. So I am telling you, anybody who wants to throw around the term illegal, then you better back it up now. And you better put forward that statute that says that this council with this authority cannot act, cannot have a hearing, cannot call to the table. Anyone without the ethics board of review. The ethics board can still continue their investigation. There's nothing to do from doing that. The 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 end of the day, the best they can do is give a fine. And I can tell you this, the ethics board in this case should also be, this council should be calling them to the table. Because they have taken a year to review this case. And the only reason why is here today because of their refusal to act. This issue was bought by a couple of the commissioners that sit on that board. They they followed the process. They went to the ethics board. Last year, last year. And nothing was done. So they had no choice but to come to the council. And now the council is is throwing it back in the loop and saying, oh, we're not going to, we're not going to do anything. We don't want to do that because we're waiting for the very board. Who failed to to perform their duties, failed to investigate in a timely manner and put this issue to bed. They had ample time to do the investigation and complete it and come back with their recommendation or their penalty. But instead, if you read, which I doubt any of some of these council members here, if you read, because clearly, based on what you're saying, you didn't read the opinion of the Malley Givens Law Firm. Because the Malley Givens Law Firm stated their findings, they stated their conclusion. On all three of the issues. Only one issue that they said was inconclusive, other two they said was conclusive. Now, I don't know what document you guys are reading, but you should read it because you're not doing the city or the residents any justice by sitting here and saying, we're waiting for a board that this council need to review. And in my opinion, based on their performance, and they haven't properly investigated and they kicked the can down the road, that they did their job, we wouldn't be here this evening talking about this. The next resolution I'm going to put forward is to review them and perhaps we need to repeal that ordinance and let the state become the ethics board. Because that same ethics board sent this to the state and the state sent it back to them. They don't want to do their job. The local finance board, the ethics board, the state says, no, city of Trenton ethics board, that's for you to do. They then kicked it to them, the state ethics board then kicked it back, and now we're we're here trying to do their job. So why do we have them in place? So I'm just saying to everybody here tonight that there is nothing unethical or illegal about this resolution. The council, city council of Trenton need to do their job, do our jobs. And we need to start looking at all of these boards and commissions and make sure everybody is doing their job. Because right now, people are doing what they want to do in this city. And 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 acting as acting unilaterally, running a roughshod rogue, taking powers that they don't have. Making illegal decisions. And putting our taxpayer dollars at risk and not building out the s building at the building out the assets that they should be building out. Trenton Parking Authority needs to have a forensic audit over there. That's what it needs.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So that's all I have to say about that. But for anybody, and by the way. Whoever, who is the liaison to the Trenton Parking Authority on this council? Who was the liaison who knew about this? How long did the council, Council Caldwell Wilson, how long has she known about this? Because she's the liaison to that. You not go to that board meeting, Council Caldwell Wilson? Did you not know about this? Why did you bring it to the council? Why did you bring this to the council?
So.
She's disingenuous.
So let me, let me.
Part of the problem.
Let me just be clear here. We don't need to start getting into name calling and this is.
I didn't name call.
All right.
I didn't call her name.
All righty. All righty. So, um, Councilwoman, thank you for your input and it's a motion on the floor. And before we move to the motion, I would just like to add just one point, one point of clarity. The, the, the council does have the right to remove. The, the resolution that was that is being put forward by our colleague should not have been pulled by another colleague, in my opinion. That resolution should have been put up and it could have been voted up or down. The term illegal is not is it is not. been voted up or down. The term illegal is not, is, it is not proper because there's nothing illegal here. And the fourth thing is that the Ethics Board, in their rehiring of this attorney, because the attorney that they hired was flawed, they need to wrap this investigation up within sixty days, sixty days from the day that RFP is graded and the firm is selected. Mr. Bridges, they have sixty days to wrap this investigation up because it does not take a year to determine whether something has been done wrong or right, or whether the protocol was followed. So in that new RFP going out, the scope of the work should have a timeline. And that is what I want to add to this dilemma, and I think that it would have best served us all had the councilwoman's resolution been slated down, but not tabled by any of her colleagues. That's my opinion. And Mr. Collin, we can move on and let council take their vote.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion to adjourn and table the resolution, uh, to a later date. Uh, the motion was entered by Mr. Blakely, seconded by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Michelle?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Councilmember, Council President McBride?
No.
Uh, the hearing will be adjourned and tabled, uh, and the resolution tabled to a later date to be set by the council. Um, the motion does carry four to three. Would you like me to proceed down the docket, Council President?
Yes, please.
Uh, first, we have a, uh, we have a public, second reading, public hearing of two ordinances. Uh, first, we have Bond Ordinance Twenty-One dash two, Bond Ordinance Providing for Improvements to Various School Buildings and Grounds in City Trenton and the County of Merchant, New Jersey Appropriating the Aggregate Amount of Three Million Two Hundred and Fifty-Three Thousand Two Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollars Therefore, and Authorizing the Issuance of Three Million Two Hundred and Fifty-Three Thousand Two Hundred and Twenty-Five Dollar Bonds or Notes of the City to Finance the Law to Advertise That Amendment Two Days Prior to Any Public Hearing. As I received the amendment on the second of February, I would not have had enough time to get the advertisement in. And this should be tabled, uh, it must be tabled to the next meeting for that public hearing because of the substantial amendment. So I have to do an advertisement two days prior to that public hearing notifying the public of the substantial amendment, and then we can have the public hearing, uh, either on the, uh, I believe the next meeting is the sixteenth. So we can have that public hearing on the sixteenth. But the administration did substantially amend it pursuant to a meeting that occurred. Uh, and because of that amendment, it must be tabled to a later date, uh, the public hearing because of, of the amendment. That would be, once again, the sixteenth, if, if that's what you all want.
Well, we're following the, um, the letter of the law. So if it's, so if it has to be tabled until the sixteenth, then we'll table the sixteenth.
Yes, ma'am. Do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
A motion by Council President McBride. This is the tabled public hearing to the meeting on the sixteenth. Do I have a second?
Some of.
A second by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Michelle? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. The public hearing is tabled until the sixteenth of February. Next, we have a public hearing and a second reading, public hearing for Ordinance Twenty-One dash three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement by and between the City of Trenton State of New Jersey and Community Loan Fund of New Jersey Inc., doing business as New Jersey Community Capital with respect to the East Trenton Library Community Center Project. I declare open a public hearing on Ordinance Twenty-One dash three. Any members of the public wishing to be heard for the public hearing, uh, please raise your hands or seek recognition from the Trenton City Council. I would seek recognition from the Council President. You will have ten minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to be heard with regard to Ordinance Twenty-One dash three? Second call. Okay, sir, please state your name for the record.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, my, my.
Uh, the gentleman is first. Please state your name first, sir.
Uh, my name is Crown Prince Emperor L Bay Big Bay Bag Bay.
Okay, sir, Miss Sarah, this must be related to Ordinance Twenty-One dash three.
Uh, Twenty-One dash, uh, uh, could you, uh, elaborate on Twenty-One dash three, sir?
Ordinance Twenty-One dash three is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement by and between the City of Trenton State of New Jersey and Community Loan Fund of New Jersey Inc., doing business as New Jersey Community Capital with respect to the East Trenton Library Community Center Project.
Yes, uh, yes, I would like to speak on behalf of that.
Council President, Mr. Crown Prince would like to speak.
Right ahead.
Mr. Prince, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam, uh, uh, Council President, uh, Madam, uh, Vice President, as well as, uh, Madam, uh, Vaughn as well, and all the people on the council that I'm not, uh, saying by name, I don't know. And I'd like to give honors to Mayor Gu, uh, Guziera. I'd like to give honors to Mayor Guziera. I'd like to give honors to Mayor Guziera. Um, yes, that library is part of the Dickerson Estate going back to seventeen oh-two to eighteen eighty-two. So that should be taking place along with Millham Township, which Clinton Avenue was actually called prior to Trenton existed, and it should actually go back to Assapink Creek. It's because that's part of the actual estate of the Dickerson Family Estate, that library, and that's going back to Cowwater Park as well as the founding of Trenton. So, um, I, I would like to, uh, table that project until you guys, I don't want to say you guys, city council, just find out a little bit more history on Millham Township and the Dickerson Estate and the Continental Line that actually was here. So, um, I'm gonna ask council just to find out a little bit more information. That's going back to the first people of Trenton, New Jersey, which is Millham Township, which they were incorporated as first from eighteen eighty-two to eighteen eighty-eight, prior to that, and went to Maddenhead Township, and this is where Lawrence was separated, prior to Wilbur Section having its own township, because Wilbur Section was its own township at one time, including Chambersburg, which had its own township. So I would like to table that until more information is given because that's a very historical building, and that should be part of the Dickerson Estate. And that's a family that actually was part of the City of Trenton, that founded City of Trenton, going back to John, Mr. Cowwater, as well as his family, as well as Cowwater Park. All of that's connected. You can't separate it, and it has been separated for over, um, since seventeen hundred to seventeen oh-two to eighteen eighty-two and eighteen eighty-eight. So, um, that's the history of Millham Township, and we need to look more into Millham Township. Once you find out about Millham Township, you will find out about the Free Soldiers that was back there at Assapink Creek that George Washington met when he went back there. And, and it's very significant of Hart Avenue because that's part of the Dickerson Family Estate and the library. It's because during, during that time, this was United States of America. So, and I wanted to talk about the Continental Line that was back there. It's because Hart Avenue is where the senators sit in Washington, DC. This is why the senators sit on Hart Avenue, because at one time Hart Avenue was our First Nations capital. And I wanted to say thank you for listening.
Does anybody else wish to have recognition of the Trenton City Council to speak with regard to Ordinance Twenty-One dash three?
Yes, sir. My name is Faith Ann Pearson.
Yes, Ms. Pearson. Council President, would you recognize Faith Ann Pearson?
Yes, definitely.
Ms. Pearson, you have been recognized.
Thank you. I do want to see to it that the library does get its full recognition, whether it goes back to the sixteen hundreds, seventeen hundreds, or how far back it goes. I believe it deserves its recognition. But this ordinance is trying to get a lease agreement so that the renovation work can be processed and started to preserve what is currently a abandoned historical building. So I'm hoping council will agree to have a lease drawn up between this, the, uh, New Jersey City's Community Loan Fund, as well as the New Jersey Community Capital, and the City of Trenton. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council to speak with regard to resolution, I'm sorry, with regard to Ordinance Twenty-One dash three, the public hearing?
Uh, yes, this is the Crown Prince. Uh, can I just elaborate on that a little bit more?
You cannot, sir. Your time, sir, you, you have your time, sir. I apologize.
Yes, sir, and all is well, and thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Second call. Council Pres, President, I do not see anybody else wishing. Do you want to give it a second, or would you like to move to closed public portion?
We can close, move to, close the public comment.
Uh, this is to close the public hearing in Ordinance Twenty-One dash three. I have a, uh, motion by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. Uh, I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Caldwell, uh, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
I have yours, Mr. Harrison. Uh, Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Vaughn does not wish to close public hearing. Council President McBride?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, public hearing. Yes, I thought it was for the actual lease.
Yes, my vote is yes, Mr. Conlin.
Yes, and I'm just gonna find who's talking in the background and mute them if someone, if, if IT can help me. Uh, there's a, uh, phone call going on in the background. Thank you. Uh, public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion to introduce, uh, the second reading of Twenty-One dash zero-three?
Some of.
A motion by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. Do I have a second to our motion?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Believe he was first to the buzzer. Uh, any comment? Or would you like me to move through the roll, ma'am?
Just move for the roll.
Yes, ma'am. This is for the approval and adoption of Twenty-One dash three. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. The ordinance is adopted by a vote of six to one. Council President, would you like me to move, uh, on to the next portion of, uh, the public comment on new business only?
Yes.
Uh, this is only for, actually, and I'm not sure that's why that's in there, Council President. Uh, we actually have a public comment afterwards. Uh, did you, uh, want to have the public comment on new business only? Did you want to reserve all comments to public comment at the end?
You can reserve them at the end.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we will move on to, uh, because we did have that public comment on Tuesday.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to resolutions. First, we have a consent agenda. Uh, I'll read the numbers for the consent agenda into the record. Uh, first, we have Twenty-One dash eighteen. We have Twenty-One dash zero twenty-five, Twenty-One dash zero twenty-seven, Twenty-One dash zero twenty-eight, Twenty-One dash zero thirty-three, Twenty-One dash zero thirty-four, Twenty-One dash zero thirty-six, Twenty-One dash zero thirty-eight, Twenty-One dash zero forty-one, Twenty-One dash zero forty-two, Twenty-One dash zero forty-three. Uh, those are the numbers for the consent agenda. Did any council?
I move, I would move this to consent agenda.
Uh, I just wanted to ask if anybody wanted to withdraw anything from the consent agenda or add anything to the consent agenda based on any information that they had received?
Yes, um, I want to, uh, pull, uh, I'm sorry, Council President, could I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, I want to pull, I, I believe, I just want to, just give me a moment here. Um, perhaps, uh, I had it in my notes, and I'm just pulling up my notes. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty-eight. One second, just give me a moment. Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty-eight. Can you pull those out?
Yes, ma'am. They have been pulled out. They will be rolled. I have a motion on the floor from Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson to approve the consent agenda, as, uh, with the noted exceptions of twenty-five, twenty-eight, and thirty-eight, as pulled by Councilmember Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Michelle. I will now move to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride? Thank you, ma'am. And I'm looking for the background noise as it occurs. I apologize for that. Consent agenda is approved, is approved. Now, would you like me to move into the roll? Call votes, ma'am.
Please.
First, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash oh forty-six. Uh, actually, I'm sorry, that was tabled. My apologies. Uh, first, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash oh one nine, a resolution declaring that the second Monday in October shall be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Trenton.
Mr. Conlin?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they supposed to, uh, get back to us to let us know about whether or not an ordinance needed to be done for that particular date in the Columbus Day thing?
I did see, I did see an email from Mr. Bridges, and Mr. Bridges did actually present the ordinance of all of the holidays that were stated as holiday days off by the City of Trenton, and I believe he gave an explanation, and Mr. Bridges can correct me if I'm wrong, that we can change, we can change and add any name of any holiday that we want, uh, that we have already apportioned the days off by the ordinance. And Mr. Bridges, uh, if you wanted to get Mr. Bridges, but Mr. Bridges did send an email out with that ordinance attached, uh, to the council.
All right. I didn't, I didn't, um, read it. If you, if I.
Yeah, the Council President, I actually sent it. I apologize. I probably should have alerted you to it during the docket review, but I, I sent that during our meeting, um, showing that it's proper as presented as a resolution, and in fact, has been done in the past by, uh, by the city and this council.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to introduce Twenty-One dash oh one nine? Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay.
Yes, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Uh, Council President, would you like to call me to call the roll?
Yes.
Councilman Blakely?
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Come on, come on.
Ms. Vaughn?
Um, what's up? I'm sorry.
This is Twenty-One oh one nine, your vote, ma'am, to approve?
Uh, I'm sorry, what was that one?
This is a resolution declaring that the second Monday in October shall be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the City of Trenton.
Uh, oh, yes, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash oh two zero, a resolution of Trenton City Council certifying compliance with the United States Equal Opportunity Employment Commission's Enforcement Guidance on the Consideration of Arrest and Conviction, Conviction Records in Employment Decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
And wasn't it, wasn't there a question in reference to this resolution about whether or not we needed to attach this every year, or was the ordinance, um, was the ordinance, uh, sized for the same purpose? And so I didn't hear Mr. Bridges explain that piece of it.
Yes, Council President, thank you for the question. Um, there, there is, there is, um, law in place, um, uh, with respect to this. And as I, um, alluded to during docket review, um, to, to the extent the city wants to do this, it would really be, um, uh, reiterating what is already the law. Um, but I, I leave that to the council's discretion whether or not they want to do that. They also have the ability to, um, make certain, um, sp, specific recommendations with respect to what type of charges and, and what have you. But Ms. Vaughn asked a very good question during, uh, docket review, and as I responded to her, this is already codified by law. So I leave to council's discretion whether or not they want to, um, to duplicate what is already on the books. I only have. I only have, Council President, may I actually interject one thing from the clerk's office, which is responsible, uh, for, for, for this resolution?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, the affidavit that was signed under that ordinance, uh, Mr. Bridges, is not in the clerk's office for some reason. It cannot be located. Uh, in order to re, um, which, and it must be according to the budget law, be kept in the clerk's office. That being said, uh, if the affidavit has been misplaced, could we just execute a new affidavit under the ordinance, or would we be able to have to do the resolution? If we can just execute the affidavit, then there's no issue. I, I don't know what you're talking about affidavit. What are you talking about? There is an affidavit that is attached, uh, that this, this resolution authorizes an affidavit, which under forty-eight four dash five of the budget law must be attached to and presented with the budget each year that the budget is submitted to DLGS. That's actually where uh, the origination of this law is, and this is a yearly requirement to attach the affidavit to the budget when it gets submitted to the Division of Local Government Services. We do not have a current copy of that affidavit in the clerk's office, which is why I ran this resolution. Uh, but if we can just re-execute that affidavit to attach it under the ordinance, then, you know, then this would be superfluous, and we could just bypass this resolution. But to, in order to have that affidavit, do we need to do this resolution, or can we just do it under the ordinance again? Is what the question is. Uh, I, I, based on what you're saying, I believe you have to do the affidavit. Well, I have the affidavit, but the resolution authorizes the affidavit. We currently don't have a copy of the affidavit from the two thousand and eighteen ordinance in the office. Would that ordinance cover the signature of a subsequent affidavit saying the same exact thing by the same exact people, or would we have to run a new resolution to re-execute? That affidavit is what the question is. You, you'd have to run a new resolution. Then we would have to run this tonight to comply with the budget law. Okay.
All righty.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. Uh, is, uh, the floor is open, or is, would you like me to move to the roll, ma'am?
Move, move to the roll.
Uh, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. I will circulate the affidavit for the council to sign. Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have on the agenda.
And, uh, um, Council, uh, President McBride, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, and I, I agree with Mr., um, Mr. Conlon about that ordinance. I believe, and, and the business administrator should be chiming in on this one, because there are a couple of, um, uh, attestations that the council needs to sign on to and review before any budget is passed in the City of Trenton. And that one, of course, we passed that particular one by ordinance because of its significance and the impact to a certain population, uh, the previously incarcerated, right? But there are other, uh, um, um, uh, policies that we need to sign and attest to before our budget is signed, and I know that we kind of, um, uh, I guess we sort of gloss over that. But yes, we, we do, and I believe the ordinance for the one that we just, uh, voted on does state that we should sign every year before the budget is passed, that the department heads have hired, that, that hired amongst those class of, um, citizens, the previously incarcerated, and have not discriminated against them. So we need to know whether or not, I mean, it would be prudent for, uh, Stephen Pinella and the business administrator to report to the public that the City of Trenton is compliant, and that we're not discriminating against that population of people, and it would be good to communicate, you know, the number of hires that we've hired. And, um, and I, and, uh, it would be good, I mean, I'm sure, uh, it's a positive thing to report. I'm just, uh, I don't understand why the business administrator is silent on this particular resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to proceed, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Next, we have Resolution twenty dash two nine four, and I have an explanation, uh, after I read the title. Resolution authorizing to amend the Type One School District Tax Amount on Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine. This is a housekeeping resolution, uh, that I brought to Mr. Cruz's attention. Uh, in June of two thousand and twenty, you had, uh, put this act, this actually was on the docket. Uh, but during, uh, during that meeting, it was actually pulled from the consent agenda, but for some reason, it was not actually voted on at the end of the roll call vote. Uh, that was a clerical error by the clerk who was sitting at that point in time. Uh, he did a good job otherwise, you know, everybody has a, he had, you know, it was based on his experience level. Uh, but it must be corrected. We did base all the documentation based upon this resolution, uh, and I would, uh, like to actually read it into the record, Council President McBride, just to ensure that, you, you are aware of it, and once again, this is just a housekeeping issue. Uh, the, most of the numbers, uh, these are the numbers that were actually used for the school, uh, tax amount, and uh, once again, for some reason, it was not run. Uh, we have taken, uh, action based upon it. It's just a housekeeping issue uh, to clean it up, and it's, uh, and otherwise, I don't believe it would be an issue, uh, for us. So, uh, Council President, do I have you leave to read it into the record again?
Yes.
Okay, this is Resolution twenty dash two nine four, Resolution authorizing to amend the Type One School District Tax Amount on Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine. Whereas Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine was adopted on June fourth, twenty twenty, for the fiscal year twenty twenty municipal budget, with Type One School District Tax Amount twenty-three million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and whereas the Type One School District Tax in Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine is twenty-three million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The amount should be amended to twenty-three million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, and one dollar and thirty-two cents to properly reflect the appropriations of the fiscal year twenty twenty municipal budget appropriation by the Division of Local Government Services. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Trenton, by the City Council, the City of Trenton, that the mayor is hereby authorized to amend the Type One School District Tax Amount on Resolution twenty, on Resolution twenty dash two fifty-nine from twenty-three million, three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to twenty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, one dollar and thirty-two cents for the said purposes in the manner prescribed by law. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Rodriguez. Ma'am, would you like me to go into the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Vaughn?
Um, I'm sorry, which, uh, one is this?
This is Resolution twenty dash two nine four. It's a, it's a housekeeping resolution?
Oh, yes.
So, thank you. Uh, Council President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you. So ordered. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash zero two one, a resolution authorizing the temporary income fund budget appropriation prior to the final adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one municipal budget of the City of Trenton, New Jersey.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. The floor is open.
It's this, um, Council, um, President McBride, is this the, uh, I can't find the, um, agenda. Um, is this the, uh, the appropriations one?
Yes, twenty-one dash zero two one, ma'am.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think I spoke last, uh, last meeting about the overtime expense, because the department, is Mr. Cruz available?
Uh, Madam President, yes, I am available.
Mm-hmm. So, I looked at a couple of the line items for salary and rate wages, and I thought they were, uh, pretty high, and particularly in the Department of Health and Human Services, and of course, the Police and Fire. And I just wanna get a clear understanding of what, why, why are the salary and wages so high? Um, folks are working from home last year, uh, pretty much, right? Um, so why would there be, how, how much overtime is embedded in those numbers?
So, Councilwoman, I, I don't have an exact number here as to the overtime for each specific department. Uh, what you have in front of you on the resolution only speaks about salary wages and the, um, operating expenses. Um, unfortunately.
So, but wages, mm-hmm, but the wages include overtime, right? Wages, overtime rolls up into wages, right?
That is correct, yes. So what department specifically are you concerned about?
Well, of, of course, the, you know, the traditional ones are always high, is Fire and Police. I can understand that, that they're not working from home. They're, they're first line, first responders. But when you go to, uh, the other departments, uh, have you looked at the overtime levels in those departments? Because all of them, all, most of them are working from home, right? So why would there be, uh, any overtime in any of these, or, or significant overtime in any of these areas?
Uh, that, that you are correct, uh, Councilwoman. However, there are, um, not all the departments are pulling overtime. Um, so that's why I was asking you what specific department were you concerned about?
The Department of Health and Human Services and Public Works.
So the Department of Health and Human Services is, is literally working almost twenty-four hours a day. Um, because they work Saturdays and Sundays, because they're making calls from their homes to schedule, um, uh, now, uh, they, they were doing, uh, uh, tracing for the people that had COVID, and then, so they had to trace back everybody that had been, uh, in contact with that individual. Uh, now, we, uh, have moved to the vaccines, and now we are also, once they call the department, we now also have to make phone calls when these people are also being scheduled for their vaccines as well. Um, so they are incurring, uh, a, a great amount of overtime. Um, and, and, and as I mentioned, they are actually working, uh, seven days a week, and, and a very, uh, extensive number of hours.
Seven days a week and holidays, too?
Unfortunately, yes. I, and I say unfortunately because they are actually giving their all uh, for the residents, and, uh, yes, it's admirable that they are not taking time off, and they are actually working. So, yes.
So, some of the overtime hours, I would like to see them because, um, some of the overtime, my understanding, even exceeds forty hours a week. So I, I, I think that's kind of impossible for somebody to work that much overtime, correct, no?
Yeah, well, one of the things you need to remember is, is that when they are, you know, they work their regular shift, anything after the forty hours is overtime, so it's time and a half. Uh, on Sundays is double time. So, uh, it, it, it is, you know, it's, it's taking.
Yeah, but they're not working, they're not working twenty-four seven, right? They're not doing anything three o'clock in the morning, right? They're not doing anything at four, you know what I mean? Like, they're not, they're not hospital workers.
So if they are earning after their, their regular hour, they're earning four hours of overtime on a regular overtime, that's already, that's six hours. But if they're working on a Sunday, four hours, it is actually eight hours. And so, you know, you, you can, uh, uh, do the math there, and they are spending a lot of time on the phones.
Well, well, they're working four hours, but they're getting paid for eight hours. They're not working eight hours.
Well, they're, well, yes, what, as I mentioned, if they're working for four hours is, on a Sunday, is double overtime. So, yes, it will, it would, it would trigger, uh, not four hours, but eight hours paid, because they're getting paid double.
Okay, so those are the concerns that I have, and as we go through the budget, I would like to see those details. I would like to see, um, those numbers, Mr. Cruz.
That should not be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
That should not be a problem. You're welcome.
Continue, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like me to continue to the roll?
Yes.
I have an introduction by Mr. Blakely, second by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh twenty-three, Resolution authorizing contract to She International for the purchase of OpenGov Cloud Budget System through the New Jersey State Contract Number M dash zero 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 three eight nine eight five one, in an amount not to exceed eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. The floor is open. I, uh, President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
I, I just wanted to, uh, reach out, well, share what the administration gave me. I'm not sure if you shared it with the, uh, rest of the, uh, council, but I asked on Tuesday what other governments had this program? And, uh, some of the towns include, or some of the cities include Tampa, Florida, Oakland, California, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, Dallas County, Texas, Savannah, uh, Dallas County, Dallas County, Texas is put here, uh, twice, Abington Township, the City of York, Pennsylvania, and FDNY, I guess the Fire Department in New York, uh, City, and so I really appreciate them sharing that information, and I'm glad that, uh, we're bringing, uh, OpenGov, which will drive more effective and accountable operations through, uh, the cloud. Thank you so much.
May continue, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh two six, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with Windsor Inc. awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services at one twenty-two Tyler Street in the City of Trenton, not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. I had also forwarded some information that the council had requested from Mr., uh, Delisle, uh, earlier today.
Um.
Do I have, uh, before we start, ma'am, do I have a motion?
Council President, um, ma- mayor?
So moved.
Oh, I see.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, a motion by Col- Ms. Colwell Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
So moved.
Yeah, I just wanna say that, again, I made this point before about getting information, uh, supplemental information, um, coming out of our Tuesday meeting, the day of the Thursday meeting. Um, you know, we just don't have time to, to, you know, we get the attorney letter at two, at, at, at two in the afternoon. I mean, that means we have to be logged in all day, and I can't possibly do that. So I'm here voting on stuff that I'm just getting information, and I'm going through it now while I'm sitting here in a meeting, but I should be paying attention to other things. Um, I don't understand, Council President, that we allow the administration to get away with this type of thing because we're doing a disservice to the city and to our office, to our seat that we were elected to. I can't, uh, vote on these things, and I get the information at two o'clock in the afternoon, uh, three hours before the meeting. I don't, I don't get how our, my other council members vote on these things without the proper inputs, ti- and timely inputs. This is begun, this is becoming very old, tired, and very frustrating, and it's just unacceptable. And I would like yourself and the Vice President to, you know, put your foot down with the administration because it's not right. You asked them on Tuesday, we, we don't get it until two hours, three hours before the meeting?
Excuse me, so, um, Councilwoman Vaughn, um, I am in agreement with you about getting the information late, but the, 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 the only way to deal with the administration when they send this information the day of is, uh, collectively, and collectively meaning, uh, you either, the council either tables it or votes it down when they give that information, because if you don't have the time to process the information that they sent over in the tenth hour, how can you vote on it with, uh, uh, using your best judgment? You, you can't, because it's not enough time to process that type of information. So, um, your point is taken. Uh, Mr. Conlon, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am. Open now.
Council President?
Uh, uh, Council President, did you want to recognize Mr. Harrison?
Pardon me?
Did you want to recognize Mr. Harrison? Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, um, on Tuesday night.
Yes, on Tuesday night, my colleagues said that they were going to be checking out these properties. If you had went over and maybe talked to the neighbors, you would know that these properties are properties that the neighbors have wanted to come down. Some of these properties I know firsthand, these are properties that people have been complaining about. Chimneys falling down, raccoons going through the back of the properties, trying to get into their properties. So these are properties that, you know, we should have, our colleagues should have, like you said, if you had questions about it, you could have went out there and looked at the properties and maybe talked to the neighbors and they could have told you the concerns of how they've been dealing with this and this is why it's an emergency. Thank you.
Uh, Council?
No, 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 we're going to move on. Go right ahead, Mr. Collin. Let us move on.
Yes, ma'am. Now I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have, excuse me. Next, we have Resolution 21-029, a resolution rejecting proposals received for environmental review record preparation services for the. My apologies, ma'am. We actually have Resolution 21-028, which Councilmember Vaughn pulled from the consent agenda. So let's go to that one first. Resolution 21-028, a resolution rejecting bids received for demolitions of various structures and neighborhood redevelopment and revitalization programs or by specifications through bid 2020-85. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blakely, I think I heard first, and second by Ms. Vaughn. The floor is open.
Yes, so, Mr. Delisle?
I'm here.
So in rejecting, counseling this resolution or these demolitions, what is the reasoning or rationale? Are they not going to be demoed? Are they going to be, are they not priority anymore? What happened?
Council President, may I add the floor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Vaughn, inadvertently, the wrong asbestos reports were included with the bidding packages that were submitted. And so the bids were defective and they included the wrong information. So we would like to cancel the bids and then reissue the bid with the correct documentation. So it's a procedural issue, if you will. But no, there are certainly priorities. You still want to move forward with the demolitions, the fundings in place. You just need to have the correct documents in the bids.
So are these private properties or publicly owned properties?
They're all city-owned properties.
They're all city-owned, okay.
Mr. Collin, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am. I have a resolution introduction by Mr. Blakely, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Do I have, now I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride? So ordered. Next, we have Resolution 21-029, a resolution rejecting proposals received for environmental review.
Well, the president, okay. A 21-025, I have a roll call on that one. I don't believe we did it.
That is correct, sir. We did. That was actually also pulled from the consent agenda. Thank you for pointing that out. We'll go to that next. We have Resolution 21-025, a resolution authorizing payment for a contract with the Unusi Group LLC, awarded on an emergency basis for demolition services at various locations in the City of Trenton not to exceed $62,000. Do I have a motion?
Well, so move.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
You may continue.
Council President?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, 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 these are the two properties I was concerned about. The one on Fairmont Avenue was with the collapsing roof. And Windsor was the one that had raccoons going in the back of the property. They were harassing neighbors. So I appreciate that these are being addressed. Thank you.
Continue, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Harrison. Now I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we do have Resolution 21-029, a resolution rejecting proposals received for environmental review record preparation services for the CBDG, ESG, and home programs. Scope of services were duplicated in RFP 2020-50 and RFP 2020-49. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yeah, this discusses on Tuesday with Mr. Delisle. And again, it's just, my only concern is, really, is that, you know, the CBDG grant program is a very important one. And I just, when we vote on it and we agree, and then later the administration comes back and they make changes or they find errors, and it's just really disappointing because, or concerning, because once the council provides their advice and consent, and then changes are made to these critical programs, federal programs and grant money and funding, it's just, it's just very concerning. And the rules are clear around the appropriation and allocation of CBDG grant funding. And if the administration is moving funds around without transparency, that's what's concerning about this resolution. And it's just not clear to me what has, what the duplication was as Mr. Delisle described. I don't understand midway, after the council's appropriation allocations coming out of the CBDG grant funding, I don't understand why the administration and the mayor has to go back and make changes or adjustments.
Thank you.
Council President? Yeah, yeah. We need to make adjustments because that way we correct if there was a mistake. That's why we're doing this.
But you're not the administration, though.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, if something was done wrong, we would like to fix it. That's what we should be doing.
You may continue, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am. This is for Resolution 21-029. I have an introduction made by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Now I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I abstain.
Council President McBride?
I'm going to vote no.
So ordered. Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Home Investment Partnership Programs for a period of one year in an amount not to exceed $75,000 through RFP 2020-50. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
You may continue with the.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I abstain.
Council President McBride? Was that a yes, ma'am?
No.
Ma'am, that was a no vote?
Yeah, no, 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 no. No vote, no vote.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 21-031, a resolution awarding contract through a fair and open process. In accordance with NJSA 19:44-A-20.4 et cetera, Northeastern Bucks Company, that's actually same company, to Northeastern Bucks Company trading as Mullen and Lonergan Associates for professional program administrative services for the Department of Housing and Economic Development, Home Investment Partnership Programs for a period of one year in an amount not to exceed $50,000 through RFP 2020-51. Do I have a motion?
One minute.
I have a motion by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. The floor is open.
Yes, I had asked to roll call this because on Tuesday, we spoke with, I asked questions around whether or not it's necessary to hire this, the subject matter, the subject matter expert folks in project management and program management. And it's just equivalent to outsourcing instead of hiring permanent employees to the City of Trenton and building out our human resource capabilities. I'm going to vote no on this. I think that all the directors need to reconsider. And I think that the business administrator should start encouraging department heads under his purview to come up with some type of approach in the city. And I don't see any type of strategy. Well, Mr. Blakely did, Councilman Blakely did mention that the mayor doesn't have a plan. So if the mayor doesn't have a plan, then the business administrator certainly doesn't have one. So, but I would just ask that the business administrator can sit with the department heads and perhaps encourage the mayor, his executive, to come up with a strategy for employing, for employment and hiring the best and the brightest. And instead of contracting out every single function in the city to outsiders. So, and that the business administrator and Ben Delisle and the other directors remember that who they serve and who they work for and who pays them. So, yeah, so start hiring local, start hiring Trentonians, the residents of the city, people who you work for, who put you in this council, who puts you in this job. And I'm just kind of insulted and tired of supporting this type of management decision-making of outsourcing every single function in our city. A project manager can be hired within the City of Trenton. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Colwell Wilson.
Yes, I would like to ask a question on this from Mr. Cruz.
I am here, Madam Vice President.
Mr. Cruz, the funding we get from the home funds, can that actually be used to hire people that can do this job?
Madam Vice President, every grant that we get comes with an administrative amount that the city can use for, to do exactly that. So when we hire, we normally hire individuals that will work. One thing that we need to remember when we're talking about hiring additional people is that when we, when we say, you know, we need to hire for this thing, let's not forget, a department not only oversees one item. We're talking about various operations that are going on in the department. So we cannot hire, unfortunately, professionals for every single operation that happens in the city. So, yeah, so we try to actually stick to the much-needed, to the service that is more needed than anything else. And I know with Mr. Delisle conversations we've been having, his staff actually takes on a lot, a lot of the operations from the city. And it's just, you know, once in a while, we will have a consultant here and there. But as soon as that project is done, like, we move on.
No, Mr. Cruz, the City of Trenton receives $700,000 to $800,000 annually. So if it's an annual thing, why can't we use that for salaried people as opposed to hiring consultants?
I'll share a piece of information with you, Madam President, Vice President. When you hire somebody, you hire them for the long term. And then when the funding is gone, then.
But they said we receive this funding annually.
So as I was saying, so when the, if the funding is gone, then the city will then have to do a layoff program for the department because you cannot just let an individual go once the funding is gone. You will have to do a layoff plan.
I'm sure that you reapply for the next year's funding before the funding runs out. And that, and once you get that funding, that person is still short of a job. But they're hired based on the fact and they're told that they're working from a grant.
And that is why, and that is why we hired, we hire somebody temporarily when we do a one-year contract and don't keep them permanently. So that when we need to let them go and we have no need for them, then we let them go once the money is done. Ben, is there anything else that you would like to add to this conversation?
No, thank you.
Okay.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have a question. I'd like to get some insight on this matter from Mr. Delisle.
Is it, Council President?
Ben, before you speak, one thing I forgot to mention is that when you do grant funding, grants is not money that is given to you. We have to apply for reimbursement. So having somebody in the, as a city employee, we may not be reimbursed for that. So that's it. My apologies, Ben. Go ahead.
The, I would just like to add that the council, Vice President Colwell Wilson and the business manager Cruz are both correct in what they were describing. We do use home funds for, to pay some staff salaries. They are available for administrative functions. We do have $700,000 to $800,000 that we receive every year. It is an entitlement program. The city gets it every year. But these, the consultants that we have here, it's on an as-needed basis. It's provide technical support and assistance to us for maybe matters that our staff needs help with, particularly underwriting or budgeting performance for particular development projects. So we do have staff that we pay for this. And certainly, Councilwoman Vaughn, your words are not lost. And we certainly would like to hire, continue to hire more Trentonians to work in the department. But there are some specific skills that we use on an as-needed basis. And that's what these consultants are to support the efforts of our staff. And that's where Adam was correct in that, you know, we just use that expertise when we need it only for that year, for those services for that year. So it's, the answer is yes and no, I guess, for what everyone said here tonight.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you. So I would, for this particular resolution, I would just like to make a point and then we can move on to the vote. When we, when we, our directors, we want our directors to look out at the demographics in which they work, understand what is needed in order to help us resolve some of our issues. And one of our greatest issues in this community is employment. And so every chance that a director gets to hire, the first focal point should be the residents in the city. Our city is hurting. There's no jobs being brought to the table here. We're worse, we look worse than Camden. And when we keep going outside of our own borders, it's a problem. We must begin to focus. We must begin to focus on the residents here that are hurting. This hiring process, getting consultants here and consultants there, and not pulling from your own borders is a problem. And that's all I want to say to this resolution. Mr. Collin, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion for Council Vice President Colwell Wilson, a second by Mr. Blakely, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Colwell Wilson?
I will vote yes on this, but I don't want to see it come before me again. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I abstain.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries, so ordered. Next, we have Resolution Next, we have Resolution 21-032, Resolution Awarding Contract Through Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJSA 19:44-20.4 et cetera to Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions, Inc., for professional services for environmental planning, grant management, and technical consulting, and environmental project management services for Trenton's Brownfield Program in an amount not to exceed $96,105 for a period of one year through RFP 2020-52. Do I have a motion?
I'm going to move second.
The Council Vice President Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. The floor is open.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So, Mr. Delisle, is this one also funded by federal CDBG grant money? Right?
I'm sorry, it is not.
Oh, it's not? So that's coming straight out of your budget?
I'm sorry, Council President, if I may.
It says home investment, okay, partnership. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, this is 30, 32, correct?
Correct, sir.
I thought it was 31.
No, ma'am, it's 31.
Oh, 32, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so this, this comes from a myriad of sources, some, I believe it may be some federal grants, brownfield grants, state HDSRF grants, probably some city capital or operating budget, a myriad of sources, depending on the project.
Okay. All right, well, I think, I think you got the gist of what our concerns are. When we're getting grant money from any government, whether it's our state or federal funds, they're public, they're public monies, right? They're public funds. And, and I think when the state give grants to municipalities, and when the federal government gives money to municipalities, it's to grow that city. And every bit of that money should be used for that purpose, to grow and develop economically that our city. And the only way, and I know you know this, Mr. Delisle, based on your chosen profession, I remember your resume very well, and I know you studied at Columbia at the School of International Public Affairs, CEPA. And I know that you know this, and that's why I don't get why your docket, what you put up here, it goes against that strategy of you coming here and developing a municipality. And you know, everything has to be, as Council President stated, within its borders. And you spend heavily your budget and the grant monies that you get outside of Trenton. So how are you ever gonna come up with a, how are you ever gonna develop economically the city that you're tasked to do? I don't see, I don't see how you're going to be successful in doing that with what you're doing here now. And I just don't feel confident that you're going down the right direction with not investing in the city and our human, and our resources, right? Does that make, I mean, I mean, am I off base here that economic development should be insular and internal to the municipality? Mr. Delisle, is that incorrect? I mean, you can't keep putting the money outside the city, right? You're head of economic development and housing inspections. So I never agreed with you taking on both of those roles, but nonetheless, that's what our CEO, Mr. Gus Yor wanted. But I don't see that you have a plan by putting stuff like this on the docket, not hiring, not investing in the human capital in the city of Trenton. I remember when I first, when you first came on board, and I was standing in front of you in your office, and you said, you know, Ms. Vaughn, I don't have any resources. And I said, oh, well, you need to hire some. And every time you come to the docket, you contracting out. And I don't get that for a professional like yourself. I don't get it. For a public manager like yourself, I don't get it. So I don't, what is your plan? Are you gonna start investing in the human capital in the city of Trenton when you're talking about building out our economic development? Because it doesn't look like you're doing that, and it doesn't look like you're going to be successful. And that's why I'm resistant to support anything that you put on a docket, because it's not, it does, it has no basis into developing Trenton.
May we continue? Mr. Collin, allow us to continue.
No, but I want Mr. Delisle to answer the question. How is this strategy of outsourcing going to develop the human capital in Trenton?
Council President, did you want to hear from Mr. Delisle?
She wanted to ask the question, but
Yeah, economic development is a long-term strategy, right? So he's constantly spending the money outside. How is that going to economically develop Trenton? He is our economic development expert. Everything is on his docket that he's presenting is counterintuitive to doing that. And I just want Mr. Delisle to tell me, am I wrong? Am I, please, Mr. Delisle, tell me, what is your, tell the public here, what is your strategy as the, as the subject matter expert in the city of Trenton on economic development?
Council President, do you like me to respond, or is that okay?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Delisle.
All right, Councilwoman Vaughn, you touched on quite a few different topics and issues there. A lot of it's statement. I'm not sure how much of it was questioned. I will say that I don't think that it needs to be insular economic development. I certainly think we need to bring in outside ideas and outside resources and investment from outside of Trenton rather than keeping it all within. So I would absolutely disagree with the notion of economic development being insular. These contracts here that we have are pretty small. For example, the last one that was just voted on by council, last year we paid only $25,000, certainly not enough for a full-time salary for a Trentonian. We had it not to exceed $50,000. We didn't know the amount of work that we needed, and it was an allotment for the year. The current one that we're talking about, and we're getting off topic with this discussion, with Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions, they have a deep connection to the city of Trenton. In fact, some of the employees live in the city of Trenton. So they may not be city employees. The dollars are certainly here within the city. I don't, the, there's other items on the docket for designation, for redevelopment, for working with a local nonprofit to build a dream of his and of the community, to honor their ancestors, to others, to demolish vacant and dilapidated houses that could make room for future redevelopment. So I really would disagree with your assessment that none of this has anything to do with economic development or growth of the city. And I look forward to discussing more of this with you at my budget hearing next week, which I think would be probably a more appropriate time to talk about visions and plans than talking about this particular resolution at this, at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, can we move on?
Yes, ma'am. I have an introduction by Council Vice President Colwell Wilson, a second by Councilmember Vaughn, and I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I abstain.
Council President? Council President? Was that a yes, ma'am? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-037, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to Petron Golo Contractors, Inc., for lead service line, lead services replacements face 2C for the replacement of 1,200 lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within Ewing Township and Lawrence Township from the water main to the water meter in the home in an amount not to exceed $7,897,600 through bid 2020-83. Do I have a motion?
So, I'm going to move.
Second.
I had a motion asked by Mr. Harrison, a second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Okay, this is one of the ones that I, oh, can I have the floor?
Yes.
Is Mr. Levinberg available?
Yes, good evening, Council President, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yeah, I received your spreadsheet with the listing of all the addresses that have been remediated or have had their lead line, their lead service line replaced. But I'm looking at, well, Petron Golo, this is a new one, and I see that he is going to be replacing 1,200 lead lines. Now, in your spreadsheet, some of the contracts have gone over the resolution or under the resolution. So I don't understand, I think the numbers, we really got to work on the numbers here, reconciling these contracts. And of course, not to mention EEO and affirmative action contract compliance. So I don't even know whether Petron Golo have gotten that information from the law department, our compliance officer in the law department, on, before entering to this contract form 201. Has that happened, Mr. Levinberg?
That has not happened, to my knowledge. We have yet to have the pre-construction meeting with the company. We would not normally have that until this is approved.
Well, no, no, no. The contract law says that before approval, they have to submit some, I mean, is Mr. Bridges on the line? Mr. Bridges?
Yes, I am. How are you? I had to come back to the computer.
Oh, no problem. So we're embarking on a new contract with the Water Works for $7.8 million. And we would like, we want to, I just want to validate before I approve this that they have received all the pertinent information on equal employment opportunity affirmative action contract compliance that they received, the AA201.
Every bid that goes out of our purchasing department has specifications with respect to compliance for that. Those documents should be submitted with their response to the bid, although it is a curable event such that if it's not provided, they need to be provided, they need to do that after the fact.
Okay, so, Mr. Levinberg?
It's in specs. I mean, you have to, you asked a question, it's a very well put question, but I have to look at the bid, I have to see what was submitted in response to that. But I do acknowledge your point that that's something that should be in there. That's something that comes from purchasing. So I think maybe you and I could have a sit down and talk about the logistics of how things happen. But those bids are put out through purchase, through purchasing, as you know. Their response to those bids, once those bids are received, they're graded and looked at for not only the company's or the individual's ability to do the work, but also the compliance with that. But that's something that, that should be either post or shortly on the heels of any submission for legal work under the local public contracts law.
Yes, so, is Mr., so the contingency department reports to Mr. Cruz. So Business Administrator Cruz, can you speak to that? Would you know whether or not the Petron Golo Construction Company submitted their affirmative action for 201?
Madam President, may I?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Hi, yes. Councilwoman, I am not aware as to the particulars of this specific contract. If, if there is an issue with them submitting specific documents, as Mr. West stated, there are, there are forms that are considered to be fatal flaws if they fail to submit them upon submittal of the bid. But then there are other forms that are curable. AA, did you mention AA21?
Oh, the AA21 is the one that they must submit, not only to us, the municipality, but they also must submit that to the New Jersey Department of Labor Workforce Development, right?
Yes, yes.
Before coming, and actually, that's for any contract over $1 million.
Right, so
This one is $7.8 million.
So the form, that form is actually not one of the mandatory requirements from the state of New Jersey that can be, that is considered a fatal flaw and is curable. So as Mr. West stated, it is something that could be submitted as we go along with the contract. I can find out further and provide you something in writing as to what order would that come in? Will it come prior to the award or during the, during the award and before the notice to proceed?
No, 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 I must say.
It's different stages.
I'm not challenging you, Mr. Cruz, but I think that you're incorrect on the 201. 201 is the initial one, and that's a must, not a
That is absolutely must.
Have, for the contract. They have to agree that they are going to commit to being affirmative action compliant.
Yes, Councilwoman, there are actually, if I'm not mistaken, four or five items that are not curable under the local public contract law. And I don't recall that item being
No, no, these two are not curable. That's why I specify the AA201 and the AA202.
So as I mentioned, Councilwoman
The AA202, they must submit every month, every month for the duration of the contract. The 201 is the initial one.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Attorney Wes Bridges said that he will, I know we're voting on this, and you can abstain or not, but he, there's, Ms. Razat is on the line. And Ms. Razat is the EEOC officer for the city of Trenton, right? So this is information that she should have. What is attached to the packages? What is attached to those packages? When the bid goes out, there's a certain amount of information that has to be submitted back to the procurement office. That should come from Mrs. Razat.
Is she on the line?
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much, Jacqueline Abdo Razat.
Yes, could you, could you help us out with what part of the packages, the bid packages have, what forms in them, and what forms are incurable and what forms are curable here?
Yes, I just want to say that with respect to the forms you have to have, there are a plethora of forms, but the most important forms to start your, to start the project, you must submit the AA201. But that form is to be submitted at the time that the contract is awarded. After that form is awarded, there are numerous forms that have to be, if I can, if I, if I may, if you could just give me a second, I have my forms in, for some unknown reason now, my computer is acting up, so just bear with me. I just want to give you all the forms, if I may. Thank you for your patience.
... that breaks down your diversity efforts and your commitment to try to create a diverse workforce pursuant to statute. And those documents, either the employee information sheet, or if it's a contract or the initial work project sheet, have to be submitted, and they have to be submitted at the time the bid, at the time the bid is awarded. Those documents, when I say cure, meaning if someone responds to an RFP, Um, those documents, when I say cure, meaning if someone responds to an RFP, um, and that document is not in there, prior to, um, that contract being effectuated, those documents need to be received.
Yes, and I'm fine with that, so, I, I, I'm, I'm fine.
Jackie, hold on, Robin, Jackie, go ahead.
Thank you, sir, um, I just wanna make sure again, the AA two oh one, which is the initial project work, workforce report instruction, um, and also, um, if you go online to the website, they also have the instructions, again, the monthly AA two oh two, the monthly project workforce report, that is a must. The employee information report, and again, they have, they have all kinds of, um, instructions so that people are aware of how these are to be, uh, filled out. The duplicate certification of employment information, the, um, public agency compliance officer forms, renewal packages for certificate of employee information, vendor activity report summary, and also, again, um, a lot of people don't really understand, but again, you, you must have the mandatory language, the mandatory affirmative action language, um, in all of your paperwork that you provide. You must have the mandatory contract language, you must have the affirmative action evidence, and again, like we, um, all agree, construction contractors must complete and submit an initial project workforce report form AA two oh one upon notification of award, so as soon as they are notified that they're gonna be awarded a contract, they must fill this form out immediately and send it to the state, and they must send it to the City of Trenton.
Yep, so, um, Council President, that's great, and, um, so I, I'm, I'm happy to support this, uh, resolution tonight, um, for Mr. Lavenberg, um, so long as if we approve it, and I would expect the Law Department to receive the form, provide the council with the form AA two oh one as soon as we approve it, so how many, you think it would get it by, uh, uh, Monday?
Table.
I, I'll ask for it, I don't know when we'll get it, but I'll ask for it today, but I don't know when, I can't say when we're gonna get it.
I can tell you that you don't get it.
The contract has to be, once the contract is awarded, they have to submit the two oh one.
I understand, and no, we, we request it immediately i- if it's not received already, but I can't say when we're gonna get it, that'd be, I, I just don't know that, and, and I will say also. Huh?
No, go ahead, finish up, and then Councilman Rodriguez wants to, um, um.
Go ahead, I defer to Councilman Rodriguez.
All right, hey, Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, this, uh, resolution to be either pulled or we should table it until we get that documentation, because, you know, we are wasting time here, and nobody is showing that, that the verification is there or whatever it is, so we should table it until, or the administration could pull it until they have all the documents with it.
Councilman, they're saying that the documentation comes after the contract has been awarded, so they're not in block, they're not.
We are, this, Ms. McBride, excuse me, but this resolution is awarding them the contract. This is it. We are deciding that tonight.
Council, Council President? Is, is Councilman Rodriguez finished?
Yes.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we have to approve this, and then they will submit that form, they will not enact the contract until they get that form.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Razat.
This is Jacqueline Abdo-Razak, if I may, um, um, Council Vice President is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we, Mr. Collin, um, we can move forward?
Yes, ma'am, I have a motion on the floor from Mr. Harrison, I have a second by Mr. Blakely, do I have any other motions? Or shall I move to the roll?
We'll move for the call, for the roll call.
I'll now call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
I'm gonna abstain.
Resolution passes four two with one abstention. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero three eight, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to JCI Jones Chemical, Inc., for the Furnish and Delivery of fifteen percent sodium hyperchloride, the solution is issued as a, the solution is issued as a disinfecting agent in wastewater treatment for the sewer utility in an amount not to exceed ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars through bid twenty twenty dash eighty-seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Council Vice President Colwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Oh, wait a minute, that's the consent, what was that one?
It was pulled out of the consent agenda, ma'am, this is the, pulled out of the consent agenda.
Say again.
I have a second. Floor is open.
So, um, I don't know why this was pulled out, but, uh, Mark, um, Mr. Lavenberg, uh, this is for the sewer, this is for the sewer, the sewer utility, correct?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Mm-hmm, so, um, are we all out of this sodium hyperchloride? Have we, um, I mean, is that, is this why we're extending our contract or, or re- reissuing the contract? Because this is the same company, right? We've already done a contract with them last year, didn't we?
I believe that we did have a contract, I don't know if this is, uh, an extension, it's, it's a new contract that went out, and it's an annual bid, so we do add it, you know, we, we do this every year.
Yeah, and I don't understand, like, I mean, I, I'm always concerned about when we, when the same contractor gets the, the, the contract. I mean, I have, you know, I mean, they're always the one that's coming in, I mean, I, I don't know, JCI, they seem to be the only game in town here with this sodium hypochlorite.
Well, it's, it's a very competitive, uh, field, I can tell you from experience, and, and JCI Jones, given their location to facility is, it's a low bid, it's a fair and open process.
Well, okay, well, okay.
And they're bid, so they're doing it cheaper than everybody else.
Really?
Yeah, and at the end of the day, it's still the same product, but I, I mean, transportation is a big factor in getting it to the location, um, and then there's the expense of making it, but, you know, it's, it's basically salt and electricity, and that's, that's how you come up with this product.
Yeah, no, no.
There's really not a lot of manufacturers out there that make this.
Oh, I see, okay, so, um, not, so not many suppliers, and I do know it's salt because it does say sodium, I know what sodium is, sir, so, um, uh, yep, um, again, I'm just, I just hope that we're following the fair and open process, right, when we're going out, when we, when we're renewing these contracts, because, uh, if we're not, you know, I just want the department heads to know that if you're not following that fair and open process and, uh, and, um, I mean, you, you're breaking the law, to say the least.
Okay, Ms., Councilwoman Vaughn? Continue, Mr. Collin.
Yes, ma'am, I will now call the roll, I have an introduction by Council Vice President Wilson, by Mr. Blakely, but I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash oh forty-four, uh, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to JAS Group Enterprise, Inc., for Lead Service Line Replacement Phase Two A for the replacement of twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within the City of Trenton from the Water Main to the Sewer Meter in a home, in the home in an amount not to exceed seven million nine hundred seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars through bid twenty twenty dash eighty-one. Do I have a motion?
Madam President? About twenty-one dash, uh, zero four, twenty-one, zero four zero.
Councilman, now.
Councilman Rodriguez, I didn't hear you. Well, it, it's, it's, uh, twenty-one four, uh, forty-four, he said.
Yes, there is no twenty-one zero four zero on the docket, I believe it was pulled, uh, either prior to the docket or, or not, but it was not on the docket, sir.
Which one? Uh, twenty-one zero four zero?
That's correct.
It's here. Spinello, Spinello, we have to order it.
You are correct, and for some reason it was left off the docket, I apologize, it is in the packet, so I will, I will figure out what that correction is, so I will put it actually, I will actually read this into the record, obviously it wasn't on the docket, and I apologize for that. Uh, we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four zero, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to Spinello Companies Lead Services Replacement Phase Two B, Hamilton Township for approximately one thousand seventy-five addresses in an amount not to exceed eight million four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and ten dollars through bid twenty twenty dash eighty-two.
Council President? Hi, Collin? Any feedback? Um, Council President, may I speak?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, um, again, I would just want the Law Department, um, to verify, Spinelli, Spinello is a contractor that already has a contract in flight, it, it's already underway, right, that, that, one of the contracts are still being, um, invoiced upon, correct, Mr. Lavenberg? Actually, Spinello has two other, two other live contracts, right? They, they have two other live contracts, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Mm-hmm, so, um, Mr. Bridges or Ms. Razak, Ms. Razak? Have they been reporting monthly? There's, there, uh, two, have they submit, have they been, I, I know that Mr. Bridges sent over, um, one of their A, AA two oh twos, but that was earlier last year, February twenty twenty, um, have they been submitting on a monthly basis their AA two oh two to the?
I received in response to your inquiry, Councilwoman Vaughn, I received today email with AA two oh twos with a breakdown of, um, their employers, their laborers specifically. Um, if you'd like, I can go into the details of that, or I can forward it to you.
No, what, what, um, okay, so, they, so they have on all two of their contracts? On both contracts?
Uh, I believe that's what I have, I can forward that to you, I have the documents dating back, hold on, let me finish. Dating back to, uh, the first one I'm looking at now is, uh, five eight two thousand twenty. I also am looking at their AA two oh one, which is dated December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Unfortunately, it's, this predated my three-week, um, engagement with the city, so, um, I, I, I can't tell you specifically if that was contemporaneous, um, with their actual contract, but I have those documents here, and with respect to your question that you were very, um, passionate about, and last, your last speech you gave last week was, I was very moved by that, um, they have twenty-six workers on the project, seven are African American, um, and now, understanding that diverse workforce is more than African American, but let's just assume we take African Americans by themselves for a minute.
And women, and women.
Correct, that, that's right, you're right.
That's right.
That's right, good job. So if, 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 if just African Americans, that's twenty-six point nine percent. Spinello, I was informed, has just hired another African American, um, that will bring the total to eight out of twenty-seven, which brings the percentage to twenty-nine point six. However, if you include, and I think you would agree with me, um, that Latinos and women are also included in minorities, um, there are thirteen minorities out of twenty-seven on this project for a total, uh, diverse population of this of forty-eight point one percent. So, um, you asked that question, I think it was a very good question, I appreciate your passion for wanting to make sure that there's compliance with that, but I will forward that to you, if you have your email up, I'll forward those documents to you now so you can take a look at, and if you have any questions.
Well, so, my question to you, so my question to you is, it's, it's not about my passion, it's about the law.
The law, correct, for following the law, so I'll forward that to you.
It's not about Robin Vaughn and her passion, it's about the law. So, are they compliant with the percentages?
Um, forty-eight point one percent, I would say without even reading the statute, they're probably compliant with the statute.
Well, I, well, we, well, we need, we don't need probably, we need.
I'm telling you, yes, I'm telling you, yes, and if you find somebody that says otherwise, I'd be happy to talk to them, yes.
Okay, okay, well, I, I think you had a talk, I think you would also, uh, consult, did you consult with the Department of Labor, Workforce, uh, Labor and Workforce Development?
I actually did, yes.
Okay, and they said that there, okay, okay.
And in fact, I'm, in fact, you asked a question, I'm gonna finish it, like tennis, we go back and forth. I called them today, they said they're sending a letter to confirm what has been submitted and whether or not they are compliant, I did that based on our conversation Tuesday, I haven't had time to get that letter, but when I get it, you'll be the third to have it.
Well, I, I, well, I, I want the whole council to have it.
Okay.
I want the whole council to have it.
Okay, then you guys will be second to have it, you'll be the third.
No, I don't wanna be the third, I, I wanna, I want my whole council to have it. As, 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 as a matter of fact, just let me be clear here, and Mr. Bridges, please send it to the clerk's office, to Mr. Collin, and Mr. Collin will make sure the entire governing body receives this information, okay?
Everything I get that goes to the council goes to the clerk, which is why I said you'd be the third to get it.
Okay, well, if it goes to the, all right, so, um, so you need to do this.
I need to move on, I need to move on.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Collin, move on.
Yes, ma'am, so I have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four zero, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to Spinello Companies for Lead Service, Lead Services Replacement Phase Two B, Hamilton Township for approximately one thousand seventy-five addresses in an amount not to exceed eight million one hundred and two thousand three hundred and ten dollars through bid twenty twenty dash eighty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second. Say again.
By Mr. Blakely. Vice President, Madam President, you want me to move to the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Abstain.
Yes, ma'am, so ordered, the motion carries, Resolution twenty-one dash zero four zero is approved. Next, we do have Resolution twenty-one dash zero four four, Resolution Accepting a Bid and Awarding a Contract to JAS Group Enterprise, Inc., for Lead Services Replacement Phase Two A for the replacement of twelve hundred lead or galvanized steel lines for residences within the City of Trenton from the Water Main to the Water Meter in the home in an amount not to exceed seven million nine hundred and seven thousand eight, three hundred and eighty dollars through bid twenty twenty dash zero eighty-one.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
You make him to, Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am, I will now call the roll. Mr. Blakely. Colwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, no, 'cause they, they still haven't submitted their two zero one, this is a new contract, this is a new contract, I hope that the Law Department.
Your, your vote, Councilwoman Vaughn, what is your vote?
I can say something before my vote, can I?
Actually, you cannot, what's the vote is in progress, ma'am.
Oh, I see.
Voted nay, uh, Council President McBride.
No, no, my answer, my, my vote is no.
You did, you voted no, ma'am, yes, I have, I recorded his name. Council President McBride.
Abstain.
Council President McBride, abstains, the motion carries. Uh, I have been informed by the administration that Resolution twenty-one dash zero four five is being pulled to amend it again, uh, that will not be heard tonight, uh, next we will move, uh, with your permission, Council President, uh, to the introduction and first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash four.
What is?
Say again, I'm sorry.
What is the resolution that they're pulling?
Uh, the order, uh, the resolution that was pulled is Resolution twenty-one dash oh four five, and that was the resolution reapportioning money from the old school board bonds, uh, they indicated that they were going to amend the number, uh, and that they should have the new number, uh, for me, I did not get the new number, but they indicated that they were pulling it, uh, this would correspond to the ordinance, uh, the bond ordinance that we had to table. Uh, this would correspond to the ordinance, uh, the bond ordinance that we had to table due to the advertisement. So uh, I I, at that same time, I believe they uh are going to amend the resolution that corresponds to that ordinance.
Okay.
So this is the resolution reappropriating three million or three hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty cents in excess bond proceeds from bond ordinance number zero-eight dash forty-three, twelve dash four, and eighteen dash thirteen to provide for the installation of new boilers at the Hedgesbeth Williams School on behalf of Trenton Board of Education by and for the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer State of New Jersey, and Mr. Cruz had requested that this be pulled this morning. So, uh, with your permission, Council President, I will move into the introduction and first reading of ordinance uh twenty-one dash four.
Go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am, for we have, for your consideration, uh, the introduction and first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash four, ordinance amending and supplementing chapter fourteen of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic no parking for snow plowing as it applies to General Green Avenue and Lyndale, Lyndale Avenue. Uh, this would be for a pending set for February sixteenth.
Hello?
Hold on one second, I'm getting a lot of background noise. If anybody who is not on council can please mute themselves, it would be greatly appreciated. Uh, I did have a motion, can I have the uh uh motion again, please?
Don't move, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, I thought you had moved the table that.
What, really? If it could be tabled, because this is, I I I uh, I I asked questions about this Tuesday. We're having a lot of problems with uh with this, uh, people having to get out at nighttime and moving their cars when they can't. You know, we had this situation in Roble and Avenue the other day, where I I I I got a message at twelve, at midnight. I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Harrison went there and helped uh these senior citizens move their cars because the police was threatening to to take him, uh, uh, take him down, you know, and ticket them. You know, I don't, I I I believe that's unfair, and it is, uh, this was signed by Mr. Onitiri. You know, who who asked for these ordinance? That's what I'm asking for, because these are two small streets. The uh, General Green goes from West State to Riverside Avenue, it's about two blocks, I believe. And Lyndale is about three blocks, this is here and it's uh, it's Trenton. From Hamilton Avenue to uh Liberty Street. It's not, it's not a an avenue, uh, it's it's not a state road, it's not a county road. Uh, this, this type of ordinance, what, they they will come back to us, you know. Uh, I'd like to know if there is a consensus on the residence of those two streets on, you know, agreeing to that, you know. Uh, were they notified, not this year, it's not now, because it's too late. Uh, were those residents notified that we're gonna be voting on this, so they could have been in this hearing today? You know, I I I I don't believe it's fair. I believe we should get rid of some of those uh, kind of street, we should get rid of those, uh, emergency vows, uh, 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 still be moving. You know, people live there, we have residents that live there, they have no other choice. You know, they have been living there all their lives. Now, some of them are old, seniors. They have their car there, you know, don't tell me that they have to get up at midnight to move their cars to the nearest school, which for General Green will be, I believe, Cowwater School, if that parking lot is open, because that school is closed, or uh, Ha- uh, Hamilton West, and for Lyndale will be the Hedgesbeth Williams. That's the closest one, and that's way there, up there from high, and that's way down, for people who walk. You know, uh, I think these ordinances are very unfair, you know, uh, they should be done. I know that it's hard for public works to to do, you know, or to go there and I I I I do one at a time, but, you know, if we're for the benefit of the city, you know, why why picking on these streets, you know? I wouldn't, I I wouldn't like to have uh this restriction in my street where I have to move my car all the way to Trenton High. All the way to Trenton High.
What would you like to do with the ordinance?
W- w- what, uh, are they pulling or we should go to uh to table it?
Uh, Council President?
President?
Council President, guys.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah, um, I can't vote for any ordinance restricting um cars from parking in the snow areas until the city puts a comprehensive gr- um committee together to work out a plan for snow removal. Now, they can arrange to bus these people, to pull these people, the people can park in in schools and parking lots, but someone has to be there to pick them up and take them back to their homes. You can't have senior citizens driving all the way to a parking lot and then having to walk home. I mean, I don't understand how we can do this, and I I just think it's incumbent upon the city to give us a comprehensive snow removal plan and put it out to the public. Thank you.
My my question.
Council President?
What do you want to do with the ordinance? Do you want to pull it, or do you want to table it? That's that's the question. What do you want to?
Vote it down.
Ma'am, that's right. Mr. Rodriguez did make a motion to table. Do I have a table, and is that table indefinitely, sir?
Indefinitely until they do what uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Mark Caldwell said. Study alternatives for the people to, where, where are they gonna park? We don't have that anymore. We don't have that many schools opening in Trenton.
Do I have a second?
Council President, can I, can I speak on this?
Uh, motion must be heard first, though, sir. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. A motion to table is an interceding motion that must be heard, so uh, Council Vice President, I will call the roll and the motion to table indefinitely. Uh, Mr. Blakely, to table indefinitely.
Yes.
Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Michelle?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Motion to table indefinitely carries until such time as.
Can I speak now?
Y- yes.
Can I speak? Okay. First of all, it it was at midnight, right? The police didn't threaten anybody, that never happened, there was no threats. Um, the police actually came out the next morning, the neighbors, we went out there, we helped out, they got the seniors. Uh, Roble Avenue has buses, and the buses cannot get down the street unless the cars are moved, you can't get the, the bus can't get through. It can't get through, and Lyndale, if anybody knows, Lyndale is a very tiny street. So you have to move the cars so the plows can get through there. There's no way a plow is gonna be able to get down Lyndale where cars parked there. Cars are gonna get sideswiped.
Okay, could could you continue, Mr. Colin?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have, uh, going through the docket, uh, at this point in time, we would, uh, be up to, uh, public comments at this point in time. Uh, did you want to open it up? Uh, is it, does anybody wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council Public Portion this evening?
Yes.
Uh, state your name, sir.
My name is Tyrell Smith.
Council President, we have Mr. Smith.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, you have ten minutes, sir.
Thank you, guys, fifth evening, thank you guys for hearing me out. Uh, my name is Tyrell Smith, I'm a former, um, resident of the South Ward District Two. Um, also the Chair of the South Ward Neighborhood Association. Um, uh, I wanted to know, how do we go about, how do the South Ward Neighborhood Association go about getting, um, five-twenty-eight Lamberton Street, which is abandoned house on the um docket to be brought down? Or how, what is the process for us to, um, get this abandoned property, um, brought down? Um, it's it's been over- overthrown with drug trafficking, you got vagrants inside the building, and I see that you guys are bringing properties down which are privately owned and also city-owned. So I just wanna know, what is the proper process to get these houses down? Because the South Ward Neighborhood Association is, uh, in the regent down there, it's getting tired of looking at this house filled with drug addicts and drug users.
Mr. Colin, if you could take his, um, information and have Mr. Delisle, uh, get back to him.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Mr. Smith, can I ask that you, uh, send me an email to clerk@trentonnj.org or call my office in the morning, and I will get your information, I will forward it to Mr. Lowry and to Mr. Delisle.
You said that's clerknj.org?
It's clerk, C-L-E-R-K, at trentonnj.org.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council?
Yes, my name is Faith Ann Pearson.
Council President, Mr. Faith Ann Pearson would like to be recognized?
Yes, go right ahead.
I have several questions. Number one, I know it went to the census, uh, the census, um, agenda, but I would like to know, how can Joseph Harrison, being a city council member, also be, without conflict of interest, appointed to the planning board?
It's by ordinance, ma'am, somebody must be appointed to the planning board, uh, from from the city council. That's why it's an annual ordinance resolution that the clerk's office runs for, uh, council liaisons. In that particular case, that was cleared to the Law Department. The Law Department, uh, indicated that the resolution be run for the member, I believe it's a class-three member that's appointed by council.
So there will no, there will be no conflict of interest if he decides to push, uh, zoning or planning ordinances within his own ward?
That I'd leave to Mr. Bridges, I don't believe there's conflict. Mr. Bridges, you could be, if Council President wants.
No, there, uh, the question could be put out, and, um, you could submit an answer to her at the end of, um, the public comment.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Pearson, if you'll email me at the clerk@trentonnj.org, I will get your question answered and get back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Colin, appreciate that.
I also have a question referencing the, uh, resolution twenty-one thirty-seven and the twenty-one forty, referencing the Trenton Water Sewer for the lead line replacement. Why, why are we, city of, the city of Trenton residents, paying these, uh, contractors for the, um, Ewing Township, Lawrence Township, Hamilton Township's lead line service? Why do not they have their own and then, uh, pay us? I don't understand how we, Trenton residents, without property taxes, end up paying these, uh, contractors to do the lead line replacement in these townships, they're getting it on our buck. Again, you can, I will email you, the clerk, and you can explain that one to me at that time as well.
I'll submit it to the Water Department, get you an answer, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am. Next, Council President, we have Ms. Evangeline Ugori, who is, uh, seeking recognition.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms. Ugori.
Yes, uh, thank you very kindly, the, uh, Council President, Vice President, all honorable council people. Hello to my fellow Trenton residents. I wish to address the issue of the resolution twenty-one zero four-six. Um, albeit I know it's been tabled. I am hopeful that, uh, when it gets brought back up, hopefully, that all the sentiments expressed by all concerned will have been passed. Indeed, um, this was the, the, the result of the ethics complaint, uh, to which I am party of as a Commissioner on the Trenton Parking Authority. And, um, I just want to say that the problems that I have observed, being one of the newest Commissioners on the board, uh, problems that are replete in every major aspect of the Trentons', uh, govern- governing body utilities. And I, for one, um, having observed what I have observed and all the civic lessons I've learned watching this particular session of council in action, it will be remiss of me if I had not been a party to that complaint. I wish to bring it to the attention of the board, I mean, the council, the, the gov- the governing, uh, body, which is this council, and the Trenton, fellow Trenton, um, city, uh, residents and citizens. Um, um, Trent needs all the help that it can get from all its major utilities, one which is the parking authority. We cannot condone corruption across the board, we cannot condone a visionless authority. This authority has been in existence for about seventy-three years. Very summarily, from my vantage point of view, it is an authority that has about thirty million in assets, and just give or take, I'm rounding up figures here. And its debt portfolio is twenty-seven million, therefore, about three million. At the rate of the expenses that I see from the financial reports that have been tendered thus far, it will probably take me maybe less than six years or over to deplete it. My point being that there has been no vision for this authority, as far as I can see. I'm still studying their financial records, I'm still studying their operational methods. I dare say that at the end of perhaps another thirty days, in addition to the almost one full year that they have taken to attend to this year's ethics, uh, complaints, that, uh, um, I I'm confident that if all of you on this governing board, the council, mean well for the citizens of Trenton and mean well for the good governance of Trenton, part of which is the mandate from the ACOs and the MOUs under which your function is a yoke on our neck, you will see fit to want to reorganize, you will see fit to want to clean up the corruption that is so, uh, long entrenched endemic to this authority. It doesn't bode well. This authority is not self-liquidating, in my opinion. There is trouble for this authority, and there there is much that needs to be done to clean it up. There is much that needs to be done to improve it. Uh, all I've seen is, uh, thus far is the depletion of what, if any, money it has gone here from its glorious days. It's going fast into its debt portfolio pockets, and the rest of it is being squandered in the direction of the, the, the very topic that is the essence of the ethics complaint. And so I would hope that all of you members of this governing board, governing body, the ca- council will see fit to vote your consciences accordingly when the time comes, when that resolution is brought back up. I thank you very kindly, I will heal back my time for now.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council?
Yes, my name is Ralph.
Uh, Ralph, uh, Council President, we have Ralph, uh, Mr. Ralph, can you state your full name for the record, please?
Raphael Cologne. I am a Trenton native. Um, I want to applaud the council for, uh, passing resolution for having Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, so I'm overdue, and, you know, the people that came before us deserve to be recognized and honored. Um, and their story be told as well. So I applaud you all today for making history, I appreciate you all and your hard work.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else who's to be recognized by the Trenton City Council Public Portion? Uh, anybody who has a telephone number, I I know you say, some of you can't raise your hands. Uh, anybody speak out, and I will seek recognition for you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, what's your name, sir, for the record?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is Crown Prince, Mike, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Yes, this is Michael Smith.
Council President, Mr. Michael Smith?
Go right ahead, Mr. Smith.
Yes, I want, uh, thank, uh, the, uh, council members for everything they do, especially, uh, the council members that came to the rescue the other night here on Roble and Avenue. You know, they have woke the residents up here around twelve-thirty, having officers blaring their bullhorns through here, waking residents up at twelve-thirty to move their cars out of ice, and I had given a call to Joe Harrison and, uh, Andrew Bobbitt. I want to thank you all too personally for putting that call in and taking care of that matter. You know, the residents round here definitely want me to thank you, and I'd like to thank, uh, council for all you all do. Keep up the good work, and I will stay in touch, and, uh, yeah, may this year be a prosperous one for us.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President, we next, we have Crown Prince?
Go right ahead, Mr. Prince.
Yes, uh, and thank you, uh, and thank you, Mr. Kirk. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to give all honors to the council again. Uh, uh, Council, uh, President McBride, I played with your son. Um, also Ms. Vaughn, your family, I call you Mr. A.C. Daughter. Um, I know you, uh, your families, and I just wanted to say you guys are doing a continuous job. And for, uh, those council members that I do not know, um, I just wanted to say the history of Trenton is very, very important to study. Once again, I'm gonna reiterate this to Fools, Naples, Capitol, and please monitor all resolutions that. and please monitor all resolutions that guys are passing is because you guys hold the key to the world of the city of Trenton. This is the First Nations Capitol and we need to walk upon it, talk upon it, and act upon it and hold our history firm. Not just pass laws, we need to hold our history firm is because this nation was the nation here first. This is why George Washington settled here. It's very important for you to make the right decisions for your nation and thank you.
Mr. Colin?
Council President, we have Mr. Paul Harris seeking recognition.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, good evening. You know, I just wanted to point out, there's been multiple meetings that we've been at over the past two years where council members have said of the importance of lead line pipes being replaced in the city of Trenton. Multiple meetings. Where, where directors and the B.A. and the mayor were berated. So we get an ordinance, uh, on a resolution here tonight, it should have, it should have passed with all seven votes. I'm confused why anyone would vote against replacing lead pipes in the city of Trenton after you've spent countless meetings voting against, railing against the administration and the water director for not doing it. The second thing is, not a single tax dollar goes to Trenton Water Works. Actually, Trenton Water Works pays for a number of employees and services in our general budget, just to make that crystal clear as to why there are numbers on this sheet here for the townships. We pay our water bills, that's how the water work survives. We will continue to pay our water bills. That's how they'll pay their bills. Not a single dollar, tax dollar goes to that. Wanted to point that out. I'm sure the clerk's gonna answer that question, but, you know, uh, it's a lot of money, but it's not tax dollars. That's it, thank you.
Uh, council president, next we have J.C. Edwards.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Ms. Edwards?
Uh, Ms., I apologize.
No worries, thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank council for voting unanimously to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I want to express my gratitude and those, uh, that of a lot of people, a lot of natives that reside right here in the city. Um, this is a step forward towards restitution for a semi-forgotten race, you know, in this city whose culture we don't recognize at all. You know, we owe a lot to the natives. We, we live on their land. So this is very important. I want to thank you for that. Um, I also want to thank you for your continuous advocacy for trying to, uh, you know, preserve some jobs for Trenton residents. I think it's very important that, you know, we continue on striving for that in order to rebuild our economy. It's important that the city invests in the residents itself directly. And if we don't have anyone qualified, then let's focus on getting people trained for these positions as well. And let's, you know, continue on investing in our residents and not continuously taking taxpayers' dollars and put it in them in companies outside of the city that don't invest in the city. You know, that money is constantly leaving here that we are paying into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Council President, next we have Phil Hawley.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Hawley.
Madam President, uh, the entire, uh, city council, uh, good evening. Um, I just wanted to speak, uh, in support of the, uh, turf fields that are looking to be built, uh, at our high school and other, uh, uh, improvements that, uh, we're looking to do, uh, and total support, uh, of that. But I would say, in the same breath, uh, we need to remedy our big, big problem in employing our Trentonians, um, to speak more intrinsically, our African-American Trentonians, uh, on these multi-million dollar projects, all right, that we deploy. Trentonian African-Americans are often less than one percent of the contractor, skilled tradesmen, and labor force. That is economic catastrophe that I think we can, we have to, we have to remedy. We have to remedy, but first we have to acknowledge it. This is where you get your vacancy from. If the majority aren't being included, it's either insanity or total neglect to expect change. And I think we have the diverse group of talent within our council, within our government, and especially of people that are ready right now to make that change. Thank you, and please get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does anybody, uh, we have Mr. Algenon Ward, council president.
Go right ahead. Mr. Ward?
Mr. Ward, unmute yourself. You've been recognized, sir.
I'm sorry, it took me a mo-
You're fine, sir.
Go right ahead, Mr. Ward.
All right, thank you, um, city council. And I just want to express my appreciation for your support for moving hill forward with the, uh, Locust Hill Project. Uh, we still have a ways to go to bring this thing to fruition. Um, we have, uh, all kind of administrative challenges that we have to meet. And it's my hope that city acts as a partner in this, in this endeavor so that, um, it, itself doesn't become a stumbling block that making sure the project goes through. I'm thrilled to see that the library is also going to go forward because Trenton's historical legacy, while we may not see it as, uh, that right now, but is actually an economic engine, um, if we, uh, utilize it in the right way. Because one thing that will never leave Trenton, and that's its history. We don't have to worry about that going overseas. We don't have to worry about a company coming and going. But if we take advantage of the things that are already here, we can actually lay a, uh, economic foundation for moving forward and to build upon. And, uh, for our people to take pride in the legacy that has been bequeathed to us. So I'm happy that the, um, council has, uh, had the wisdom to move forward on this kind of a project. I just hope that the city administration and the council all cooperate with us as we try to make this, uh, project real. And, um, let's, uh, not erect our own obstacles, is what I guess I'm saying. Um, I want to wish you all a happy Black History Month because I think things like this, um, actually teach our youth, uh, pride in our past. And I think that's the real mission of Black History Month. So that people appreciate the contributions that Africans in America have made from before sixteen-nineteen. So, um, I won't take up any more of your time. Thank you very much, uh, for your, um, support. And may God bless and get home safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anybody else who's to be recognized by the Trenton City Council?
Yes, I will.
Uh, your name, ma'am? I'm sorry, ma'am, that was very unclear. Can you state that again?
Shari Garret Westwood.
Hi, Ms. Garret. Council President, Ms. Garret.
Ms. Garret have a very bad connection.
I do, because I'm in the store. Pardon, guys. Um, I can just hold it for next meeting, I just really did briefly. I just wanted to respond on, um, the director, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Delau in regards to hiring contractors. I just want to point out, you know, um, for employment, you, we, we pay handsomely to these administrators, I mean, these directors. And when you, what I, what I heard, I've heard it before and I've seen it before, that you're hiring these contractors or consultants to come in and train you. We pay them very handsomely. And just as, um, Councilwoman Vaughn was stating, you know, with the credentials that, for the reasons they were, um, uh, 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 expected by the council to, um, replace these roles as directors, why are we hiring contractors to train you? You're supposed to come with those experiences. Because I know, you know, at my age and through my career, if I didn't have the skill base, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be considered. I had to come, I had to come with the skills and the knowledge and the talent. And it just leaves me that we, we are hired by the resume because someone said they worked here, they worked there, they went to school here. But when they're in these roles, they're not producing. And I think we need to reevaluate how we hire these directors to lead these departments and because they're not coming with the skill base because we're hiring consultants to train them how to do certain jobs, certain projects. They should have been, with the, with the, and hands, to be knowledgeable.
Ms. Garret? Ms. Garret, please let the council president speak.
There, there's just too much noise in the background where you are, is-
It's fine, council president. Thank you, let me speak, I have my time.
Mr. Kirk, may I address the council president at one time, just to, just to, uh, say something for the record? Uh, two minutes?
Who is this, sir?
Uh, this is the Crown Prince. It's very important, uh-
Sir, I'm sorry, you've already spoken, sir. We have to give other people an opportunity, sir. My apologies.
I just wanted to state that Locust Hill was already on national registry. Okay.
Sir?
On the state, okay.
Uh, does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council?
I make a motion to close public comment.
Uh, do I have a second to the council president McBride's motion?
So move.
I have a second, Mr. Blakely. All in favor?
Aye.
Anytime. So ordered, uh, public portion is closed, we should now move-
Uh, first, I'd like to let everybody, can you hear me? Oh, yeah. I'd like to let everybody know, um, I've been on the planning board for the last, uh, two years. Um, I'm not chairing the planning board. The planning board's chaired by Dan Fadden. He's doing a phenomenal job. Um, and, uh, at the end of the day, it's an honor to be on that board. Each one of our council members are on a board. Um, like we talked about earlier, some of these roads regarding snow, we're gonna have buses. If we're not moving cars, we're gonna have problems. So, um, like I said, I know Lindell, Lindell, I go down that street all the time. It's a very narrow street. You're gonna have problems where people are gonna be trapped in those houses. Um, that's it. All right, um, that's it. Thank you very much.
Councilman Mouchel? I can't, I can't hear you at all. I can't hear Councilman Mouchel.
How about now? Lot of feedback. Can you hear me now? You receive it?
Yes, sir.
You receive it now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In regards to a gentleman complaining about a house on Lamberton Street that was put in to be taken down. So I'll follow up on that.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, no comments.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, yes, council president, thank you. Um, I just want to just, uh, thank everybody who has stayed the course with us over the past two years. Um, uh, I appreciate the level of civic engagement and the level of interest you all have shown the city. And, uh, the more we get input from you, the better we could do, that, that will add to our ability to better perform our jobs and deliver to your expectations. Um, so having said that, I just want to say a housekeeping item. Actually, one of our constituents sent it over to me. Um, and she noted that, um, that, Mr. Colin, this is for you. She mentioned that Robert Rules of Order states that, uh, a second is not required when tabling, um, uh, a, a resolution. Uh, a motion to table never needs a second, according to Robert Rules of Order. So maybe, Mr. Colin, can you confirm that that is in fact the truth?
I'll have to look that up, ma'am, but, uh, we also go with tradition sometimes with regard to it. And most of the motions and resolutions and ordinances, uh, that we do in the city are seconded. So we do defer to, uh, the custom Robert Rules of Order, our guide. Um, they are not a strict guide. Uh, we do adhere to them, we have adopted them, but those rules can be suspended and also suspended by law.
Yep. One of our constituents, uh, offered that, and, I mean, I mean, it sounds logical to me. Um, so anyway, um, the, the second thing that I want to answer is to the question that one of our constituents, uh, asked, and also Paul Harris alluded to around Trenton Water Works. The bottom line is, Trenton Water Works is owned by the residents and taxpayers of the city of Trenton. We are the owners and the townships are customers. And the entire infrastructure and service is owned by us. So thereby, the owner is, uh, obligated to be the, uh, uh, the main, the primary entity to do the upgrades. So, um, so bottom line is, but nobody's getting off, uh, a, uh, uh, it's, at the expense and the upgrade of the infrastructure is, is, uh, generated by the revenue that we all pay. And every municipality, including the owner, which is Trenton, um, we have equality in the rates. So no one pays no more than the other, and that's by law. So, um, so we're all in this together when it comes to Trenton Water Works. Uh, we appreciate our customers and the, uh, municipalities. Um, however, uh, we are the owners of the water utility, so we have an added interest. So, um, I'll, I'll move that, I'll move along. And the other thing that I want to say, uh, of course, the, the resolution to address the corruption that's going on at Trenton Parking Authority, I am totally, in total agreement with what, uh, the commissioner, uh, Evangeline Ugorgi, expressed in her public comments. And I just hope that my council members, uh, really take the time to examine since we're moving, you know, looking to, uh, you know, add thirty or sixteen more days, uh, before the resolution returns. I really hope that the council members really do their due diligence and read through the issues and the laws and the policies and procedures that govern that body and our powers to, um, uh, interject and remediate. So, and the other thing that I want to talk about is what Mr. Phil Hawley mentioned, another one of our constituents, about, um, lucrative contracts. Uh, we, we're spending a lot of money in Trenton Water Works to build out our infrastructure. And we're giving, uh, you know, a lot of contracts out. And Trentonians and residents of our city and even in our local municipalities are not benefiting, right? So I just want to say to the law department and to the procurement department and to Mr. Cruz, the business administrator, that they should make it their top priority to ensure when we give out contracts of one million dollars and more, we should ensure that those contractors are understanding the law and their commitment and their obligation to, uh, be compliant with our state and federal guidelines around equal employment opportunity affirmative action and hiring minorities, women, and women. Now, one of the components that the law department have not mentioned, uh, our PACO, uh, our compliance officer, uh, Ms. Razak and our law, and our acting law director, Mr. Bridges, is the training fund requirement. There is a training requirement also that comes along with those multi-million dollar contracts that we've given Spinello, um, South State, uh, Petrogolo, and now Jazz, the Jazz Group. Now, I'm just gonna read the law very quickly. The training fund requirement, it says the division also ensures that all state government agencies, including independent authorities, colleges, and universities, allocate one-half of one percent of the total cost of a construction project awarded by the state agencies that are equal to or greater than one million for the training of minorities and women in the construction trades in accordance with NJAC seventeen-twenty-seven dash twelve-point-one. That's an executive order one fifty-one, executive order and Public Law two thousand nine, chapter thirteen and chapter thirty-five. The state agency must forward the training funds to the Department of Labor and Workforce Development immediately upon award of the contract. And it must also provide the division with a training fund letter certifying, certifying that funds have been allocated and released to the Department of Labor and Workforce Development. The funds are used to train minorities and women in the construction trades through the New Jersey Build Program, Public Law two thousand nine, chapter thirteen. And thereby develops a pool of qualified minorities and women for employment on public works projects. It is noted that local govern, it is noted that local governments are also required to allocate and release training funds under Public Law two thousand nine, uh, chapter thirteen. However, division- However, Division has, has held implementation of this law as it applies to local governments and obeys pending Attorney General advice on certain issues. So for information, we posted, uh, uh, collaborate with the New Jersey Build Program and, and contact the Department of Labor and Workforce. So I am telling the Law Department that it's not about Robin Vaughn's passion, as Mr. Uh, 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 Bridges stated earlier, it's about the law. And it's very, and I expect every single contract, as the law states, that's over a million dollars in the city of Trenton, that they are allocating this money to this training fund so that minorities and women can have skills in the construction trades. And I think that will be something that Mr. Our, our, our Councilmen, uh, Rodriguez have been speaking about since he came to council. So now we have money to do that, and this fund's supposed to have been populated. So I would expect Ms. Razak to get busy reviewing every contract that we have over a million dollars and start allocating, uh, what did it say here? Uh, allocate one half of one percent of the total cost of the construction project that was awarded, and it has to be placed in this training fund for to train minorities and women in the construction trades. And that's an executive order one fifty-one, I believe it was from Governor Chris Christie. So that's all I have to say. So let's get busy, Trenton, and get this money and get our, uh, uh, our, our, our minorities, uh, African Americans, Latinos, and women, and Native Americans, trained up and, uh, replacing these lead lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the only thing that I would like to say this evening is, first, I would like to thank all of the public for coming to the meeting. I would like to thank the Directors for coming and taking the questions and the Business Administrator. I, I just would like for the, um, Health Department to give us an update on COVID. Give us an update on where and how the people can get, um, the, uh, the vaccine, and just give us some general information about how our numbers are looking. I don't know, um, about anyone else, but I've been witnessing a lot of deaths over the last week or so from the COVID in the city. A lot of, of people that I know, families and friends are, um, suffering from COVID nineteen. So I just would like, uh, the Health Department to, um, to be prepared to put out information. If there's seniors out there that want to be, um, immunized, then they need to have the information. And you must remember that all of the seniors in the city of Trenton does not have the internet. They do not go online. And so the information needs to be by way of the newspaper or by way of a flyer or by way of, of, um, uh, a senior advocate. But we need to get this information out to the public, uh, um, a little better than we're doing. So if we could just get an update on how we are doing in the midst of this COVID. And we also need to know, um, about the schools and if the numbers are declining enough for the children to go back into the schools. If not, then we, we need to know that. So, um, because we haven't had an update in quite some time, if the Health and Human Service Director is on and would like to give us an update, I, I would like to hear from her.
Yes, I'm on, how are you, um, Council President? I did hit my hand up to raise it to speak, and I truly would love to give you an update. So I know you covered a few, um, areas in regards to COVID. So, uh, in regards to our seniors, I'm gonna start there first because they're one of our most, um, vulnerable population. Um, we have, uh, registration drive for our seniors. And so my department, they're going out and they're going to all the senior housing in which they're registering, um, our seniors, um, because we know they don't have the technology. Um, so we have done that, and we continuously doing that. Actually, I believe this week and next week, we're, um, hitting the Housing Authority as well, uh, for our seniors. Um, and I can't think where else we're, um, uh, hitting because I don't have that on me right now. But I know that we definitely are, um, targeting our seniors. We have a great deal of our seniors who were vaccinated. Um, and that, as, as of this time, I could tell you, we probably vaccinated approximately twelve hundred Trenton residents, and this is based on the vaccine clinics that we had. We had through, uh, three. So, um, in January, we had five hundred that were vaccinated. Um, and just on yesterday, we vaccinated four hundred. And then we have open, um, available slots in other, uh, vaccinated clinics, uh, vaccine clinics, that's in other municipalities. And so when we combine those numbers for our Trenton residents and on top of the clinics that we already have, we're looking at twelve hundred city residents that have been vaccinated. We have, um, done a registration campaign in English and Spanish. Those have also been, um, handed out in the community and in the senior, um, housing. We have done that. Um, it's going out through Peterson Breaking News, it's going out through the, um, Office of Concerned Citizens, it has been going out. We have done robo calls, we have done email blasts, text messaging. Um, I could keep it going, even the phone calls. We have done a lot in, in getting our information regarding the vaccines, as well as our testing sites, too. They are also on social media. Um, so we are really publicizing and, and marketing this so they're aware of where we are with that. So, um, and speaking about our testing, so tomorrow, uh, we do have a testing site that is open at PJ Hill, um, that's in the East Ward. And the reason why is because when we look at our statistical data, we look at how many of our residents are going to the ER based on COVID outbreaks or hospitalization or any symptoms contributory, um, from the, uh, COVID. And so we see that those numbers have escalated in the East Ward. So this is why we have our, um, testing site at, um, PJ Hill, um, on Friday. We had it scheduled for Tuesday, but due to the snowstorm, we canceled that, uh, Council President. And so, and then we're gonna rotate, and so next week is also Tuesday and Friday for testing, and we're gonna have that at Martin Luther King, um, School. And the reason why is because that area also has a, um, escalated, um, um, level as well with COVID in regards to hospitalization and ER visits. And so we use Martin Luther King as the, um, testing site so we can actually hit that area, target that resident, that community. Um, and I'm trying to think, I'm gonna make sure that I'm covering everything for you, Councilwoman, because you did hit a few things. Also with Walgreens with our seniors, um, they actually vaccinated approximately two hundred and fifty to almost three hundred of our seniors, and that's separate than what we have done. And so we're doing our part. We also have the Mercer County Cure Arena, with Mercer County that's have the Cure Arena, and they are partnering with, uh, uh, Capital Health. They also doing vaccinations, and so we put that out as well. We also have Henry J. Austin and also St. Francis, and sometimes Henry J. Austin and St. Francis, um, collaborate with each other to also do the testing. So we're putting that out, um, and, and different, uh, platforms so we can keep the community aware of the vaccines, of the testing, and I'm actually, um, due on live segments as well, just so that I can explain and educate about COVID and most importantly, about the vaccine for those who are uncertain about that and they're still on the cusp. We do ask them to, uh, still consider registering. So if they do change their mind, they're on the state registration, um, and that way, because it's gonna be some time because there's a backlog in the vaccines that are coming to New Jersey. And so we do encourage that, but at the same time, we do encourage them to continue with their testing. We tell them to mask, actually double masking, um, if they can because of the different variants and the mutated, uh, variants that's out from, um, COVID. We do have those different strands that's out there. So it's just about educating, um, the community, wearing your mask, you watch your, watch, watch your distance, and you wash your hands. That's always the three main things, and stay away from super spreaders, like in, you know, congregating together and wanna hang out, because that also is contributory to that as well. So we do encourage that. Um, and so it's all about education and being on a platform, and we do this. So, um, every week, we have something out that we do try to educate the community about that. If it's something that, um, uh, City, uh, Council President, that you want us to do that we're missing, I, I truly would love to hear that because I'm always open for feedback. And again, we're in this together, we're, it's a collaborative effort, it's about the community. It's not just about, um, uh, my department per se, because I need everyone to really hop out, um, even with my staff, um, as, um, Adam Cruz, the Business Administrator, has said, that twenty-four hours, seven days a week, we are, we're available because there's so much that we're doing. In fact, we're in on Saturday, from the four hundred, um, residents that were vaccinated, we had to put them in the NJVSS, that's the state registry, we had to put them in that they were actually vaccinated so that, that way it can be counted so we can receive additional vaccines, and then they'll be scheduled for their second dosage. So it's a lot of work that come with the process. There's a, uh, uh, if you want to know the whole logistical, um, uh, system, I mean, our Welcome City, uh, Council, all of you, to really come sit with me and my team, and I can walk you through, me and my team can walk you through the entire process. Because it is a lot, but we're doing it because we will, because we really want to curve the COVID outbreak. We want to really minimize the mortality rate, um, and really the outbreak of the ventilation systems and the upper respiratory issues that they're receiving, we trying to minimize and curve that. It's all about preservation of life and making, ensuring everyone is healthy and whole, and we want to get to that seventy and eighty percent of herd immunity within our community so that way we don't have to worry about COVID taking over the normalcy of what we're used to, and that we know that our children are even suffering from this with the schools as well. And so even in my department, the trauma piece, the trauma care, ACES, that's my focus, I'm doing that as well. So it's a lot, but again, uh, uh, it's an open door to City Council, all of you, to sit with us so you can see what me and my team are doing, because we're doing an awful lot, and I want you to be in the know, and then just work with us. You can even come in and make phone calls with us as well and, and jot things down. I welcome, welcome you all to it because we can't do it ourselves. It's a collaborative effort, so I really welcome you to do that. And if there's anything I missed, Council President, please let me know.
No, I just wanted to know if there were any, um, vaccines being done that you could give the people, um, the information about? Is there anywhere in the city or in the surrounding cities that they're doing, um, the vaccines at this week or next week?
Well, it would be, so, uh, the ones that are scheduled, they're considered closed pods, so we don't put them out, they're not like pop-up sites, and where you can just pop up like a mega site, because we don't have a mega site in Trenton or Mercer County. So we can't say, hey, you know, this is where we have our vaccines come down. We pull from the NJVSS system, that is the state registry, and that's where they come. But when we, um, uh, solicit and have individuals to, um, register with us is because we come up with a backup list, right? And so concurrent planning, it's like having two plans at the same time. So while we have the state registry we pull from, we have our, our city list as well. So if we have individuals who cancel out their appointments or unable to make them, again, we do not want to waste any vaccines or throw them away. So we pull from our waiting list and we'll call and say, can you get to this location in twenty minutes? Because it only have a certain life, um, for the vaccine. So it, it's, we're not the only ones doing that. The other municipalities are doing that as well as Henry J. Austin, because we do not want to waste vaccines. So I will say this, if, if anyone's on this call, they can, um, email COVID Vac, so that's C-O-V-I-D-V-A-C at TrentonNJ.org, O-R-G. That's the email directly to us. You send us the information, we'll reach out to you, and if you're not on the state registry, we will help you get on that. As well, they can call six zero nine, nine eight nine, three two, four two, and press zero for the operator. And that's how they've been messaging for the past, uh, three weeks, we have been doing that. And we also advertise that as well, Council President. So that's how we'd be able to give them the information that they need.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez, I appreciate the information, and I'm quite sure the public does, too.
Council President? Council President?
No, no, no.
No, no, it's something very important, it's urgent, it's very important.
I appreciate...
No, it's just very, really, Kathy, um, Council President, it's very important. It's very important, if you're talking about people's health, very important. I'm not making a comment. People say they call the number and nobody answers. They call the number and nobody answers.
Council President, you want me to answer that?
No, I think you put the information out there, and we'll make sure, like you said, that you'll make sure that you keep putting the information forward. Um, this is not an argument, this is an informational session. And so, um, we'll continue to, we'll continue to improve your site, and I hope that the people got the information that you put out this evening. Thank you. I thank everyone.
You're welcome, thank you.
Council, Council President?
We, we're going to, um, make, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn during this meeting.
There's the motion to adjourn. Second.
No one answers the phone.
Second it. Second.
I seconded it already. Mr. Collin, you're on mute.
Thank you, I have a second, uh, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Mute the plan.
Any opposed? So ordered, we adjourned at eight thirty-four PM, thank you.
Mad, mad, she big mad.